First item of business is approval of minutes. We have a quorum to approve for June 10th, but not for May 29th. So we'll put that aside till the next time. Do I have a motion to approve minutes for June 10th?
Yeah, move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's approved for June 10th. We always give time for public comment on anything other than an open public hearing. If anybody would like to make a public comment.
Yes, thank you. Ira Margolis. I've never really come to any work before. My information is something that just has no bearing to stopping. In doing some of my research, I can't afford some factors that just kind of bothered me. I'm not sure how they relate to planning boards. I was checking forty-four acres that's owned by Catholic, that they're gonna build this pilot, or this pilot. And I find that although it's tax exempt, because Catholic is a tax exempt organization, it's only assessed for eighty-eight thousand dollars, or two thousand dollars an acre, according to the assessment. The reason I bring that up, because where I get confused about all these deals, or deals that are going with that, and deals, is that years ago, the town bought sixty-three acres, which they made into wetlands, or whatever the reason they removed the building. That nine buildable wetlands, okay, is assessed at roughly five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, close to nine thousand dollars an acre. So what bothered me, and I don't know if it's in part of your consideration, is how, what kind of special deal was made that this particular property, which is buildable and usable, would only be assessed at two thousand dollars an acre, instead of whatever the purchaser paid for it, whatever Catholic paid for it, as they did with other property. And I don't know if there's something going on, it shouldn't be, or whatever, it's in your domain or not, but I couldn't understand it myself as I was doing my research. And I mentioned it for what it was. Thank you.
Anybody else? Jeff?
My name is Daniel Torres, of the Town of New Paltz. My question, I'm not sure if the planning board can answer this, but I was just generally curious. I was wondering what the planning role, planning board or the Town of New Paltz involvement has been with the IDA, in regards to the Wilmerite project. And by that, do I mean, do we have a representative who goes to these meetings, who reports back to the town, or anything along those lines?
I don't believe you do.
Tim, are you?
I guess informally, I've gone to some of the meetings, and I also look at the minutes from the meetings, and have shared that with my planning board members.
Okay, and then is anyone else from the town board, or just, I mean, that's great.
I don't know whether the town board has a liaison that they send up to the county IDA meetings.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Spreitz.
We don't have any conceptual reviews, or public hearings tonight, or application reviews. I'd like to do a quorum check for July meetings. Anybody that would be eighth and twenty-second, I believe?
I'm good on the twenty-second. I'm not available on the eighth.
Ditto for me. Not available on the eighth.
Not available on the eighth.
You said this at the last meeting, I'll think for sure.
Yeah, we just checking.
I'll be here for both.
Definitely not on the eighth, and probably not on the twenty-second.
Okay. I'll be here on both days. Okay, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to discussion with the police commission, and bow out of here. You'll take over.
Okay, thank you, Lyle. In the absence of our usual planning board chair, I'm here to take over the Wilmerite part of our discussion, because Lyle has to recuse himself. And on our agenda, we have a discussion with the police commission on the financial impact of Wilmerite Park Point. And so, Leverett, are you going to give us a blow-by-blow here?
Uh, yeah, I guess we could. You can move up here.
Oh, come on.
For the benefit of our observers, and people who might be watching, could everybody identify themselves, and Kelly will be able to say down your names.
My name is Randall Leverett. I am a member of the New Paltz Police Commission, and serve as the chair of the commission. We have Ira Margolis, who is also a member of the police commission. We have Detective Sergeant Rob Lucchese, and we have Chief Joe Schneider, for the department. We met a few, I guess it was in May, early May or end of April, with Mr. Calamano, and we went over preliminarily some of the things that we were able to come up with as it relates to the police department, and its budget, and the impact on this particular project on the police department. I will say that the commission oftentimes is not quickly receptive to deferring to the department and the chief's judgment as it relates to some things, but on this particular matter, we are in full accord. And in that respect, it is in regard to the services and the impact on his department as expressed to members of the commission. And that, quite frankly, is that if this project goes through as, you know, if it goes through as planned, the impact on the police department would require us to look at having to hire four additional police officers, one for each shift, A, B-
B and C line.
B and C line.
A line, which is the night tour, would require two with an overlet.
And then, an individual officer to make up, because of contractual requirements and responsibilities, to fill in when those officers are, have their days off, or leave, and so on and so forth. Quickly, and Ira will go over this with you, because he's our finance guru on the commission. We've done a calculation for the cost over a twenty-five year period for the police department, salary and benefits, using the chief's request that four officers be hired to handle the added burden on, from this particular project. And we come up with figures of some twelve million, five hundred and twelve thousand dollars, over a twenty-five year period. If you, looking at the figures that you have, you'll see that we are in fact using new officers, basically fresh officers, who will need training, and their starting salary is forty-one thousand dollars. And then you add on their benefits-
That's overhead?
Yeah, their overhead, the benefits, retirement. Over the twenty-five year period, you can see what the total cost for the department is. Some might argue that, you know, you wonder why we would need four officers for a particular project like this. And, you know, the chief and the detective can explain it better than I, because they actually are police officers, so I'm not. But I can tell you that the information that has been provided to us is there is no other community like New Paltz that has, you know, a six thousand resident college smack dab in the middle of a village. So there's no real comparison when you look at other locations and neighborhoods, and the type of policing that needs to go on here, as it relates to having a college right in the middle of our community. So with that, you have the figures. Ira can explain to you where we got our numbers from, and the types of things that he looked at. You know, I don't know if the chief and Rob have any opening comments to make. I would hope they do. But I also, we did bring both of them, because, you know, Rob does a lot of our streetwork, so he's familiar with what goes on in our community. And the chief has to, you know, schedule and make sure our guys get home to their families at the end of their shift, in addition to some of the other responsibilities that he has. So I thought it was important that they joined us tonight, so that any specific questions that you had about policing and how it is done, you get it straight from the horse's mouth, and it's not conjecture, and something that's made up by people who don't carry guns and badges. So with that-
I just wanted to understand, Chief Snyder, you said the different shifts. Could you just explain that again?
Yeah, sure. First, if I can, I'll just backtrack just a little bit. I know we don't have to rehash too much, but when this project was first presented to us, the topic of police services was, as everybody knows, originally slated for it to be SUNY police handling the calls, which never really made sense, based on it being off their property, but there was talk about how it was associated with the college. So when the Wilmerite first came out with their figures and their calculations of police service, and they quoted the New Paltz places being minimal calls, it was based on that understanding that SUNY police was handling this. Once this has all been determined that indeed it's going to be under our jurisdiction, that's when the new figures start to be calculated. So I just wanted to, you know, make that clear, why there was some difference from the onset of this project. Our A-line tour is our night tour. That goes from eleven at night to seven in the morning. Our B-line tour, which is our day tour, is seven in the morning to three in the afternoon. And then our C-line is three in the afternoon to eleven at night. The way our contracts work, based on seniority, officers bid their tours, they can, we bounce around from day to night, and that's why in the presentation of four officers, the night tour is the busiest time in a college town, as far as the needing of personnel to cover the downtown activities, on campus, off-campus parties, things of that nature. As you all know, there's different sidewalks that roll out for time of day. Daytime, you have a beautiful village community. Nighttime, it could be a very fun community, depending on your age and what you're looking to encounter, but it's definitely a different beast, so to speak. So we do put more personnel in the evenings, especially for the nights. Based on contractual obligation with rotations, days off, vacation, holiday, sick time, things of that nature, the nighttime is where we really have to do that backfill, and that brings in that fourth body for the three shifts, for taking over with the days off and vacations and what have you. So that's kind of where that came in. The day shift, the B-line, and the afternoon shift, the C-line, on those days, we would supplement with the sergeant that's working, and/or the extra, the officers that are working already, and wouldn't necessarily have to backfill, depending on the day of the week.
Maybe, I know, I think you appeared one time when I wasn't here. Can you just give me an idea of the size of the police force? How many people are on the different shifts? So, just, and, you know, you're serving the village and the township now-
Correct.
And maybe you could just give us an idea of the size of the force, and how many people are on duty at any given-
We are twenty-two full-time, which counts myself and the lieutenant's position, which at this point is not filled. We're still waiting for that to take place. But in the meantime, that counts that position. So right now, we're at twenty, because we're still waiting to hire another officer as well. But we're going to be at twenty-two, once the lieutenant position is back. We'd never operate a day shift or an afternoon shift with less than two people.
This is two patrols?
Two patrol, correct. We have a total of, we have, right now, we have two detectives and one detective sergeant. Detective Sergeant Lucchese is our detective sergeant for that division right now. He's also wearing two hats, because he's in the lieutenant waiting seat, depending on the outcome of contract negotiations, that we like to always bring up. But we will only have two detectives, and one of which is usually a detective sergeant, the other one's a detective. We have four road sergeants, which are one for each shift, and then you have the fourth sergeant that covers the days off and past days of the other three sergeants that work. There's no way to really have twenty-four hour coverage of supervision, which is really essential, you know, without having at least four sergeants in that rotation. Patrol-wise, we are slated for four officers on the B-line, four on the C-line, and also four on the night tour.
And that's pending this project, or you're slated when you get your full staff?
No, that's what we have, full staff. That's where we should be. I think that's accurate, if I'm correct. Are we at twenty-one now?
We're down to twenty.
No, I think we're gonna be at twenty-one, not twenty-two, I'm sorry.
And your dispatchers, are they officers as well?
No, they are not. They're civilian personnel, which is less of a cost, rather than using a uniform for the desk. We have three full-time dispatchers. One works each tour during the week, Monday through Friday. Weekends are supplemented with part-time dispatchers. And also, when dispatchers take sick time, or vacation, or personal time, that's usually backfilled as much as we can with part timers as well, and sometimes overtime.
So you don't differentiate by days in a week, in terms of how many officers you have, Monday versus Saturday?
No, the only, the only officer that works, that covers the weekends all the time, is our K-9 officer. He is an A-line officer, works the night tour, and he always works the weekends, the latter part of the week, through the weekend. That gives us the K-9 coverage for the weekends, which is important for crowds and crowd patrol. We also supplement the Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights, and sometimes Tuesday nights now, with the change in the schedule at the college, that now, when they're off on Wednesday, Tuesday became the new Thursday. So it can be a very busy night as well. So we use our part-time officers to supplement those tours, to give us extra patrol coverage at night. With using part timers, and we have eleven slots for part-time officers, which is not included in the complement of full timers, that we use for parades, different events that take place, and again, the extra patrols, as well as we use them when we can to fill in tours when somebody's out sick or on vacation, depending on what the shift complement already is. Right now, we're low on, we're in the process of hiring more part-time officers as well.
So how many hours per week does the average part-timer work?
The part-timer can only work twenty hours a week. Generally speaking, they don't work that many. You may get a couple of them that will give you about that in tour coverage, but a lot of them have full-time jobs, and they are used pretty much to at least try to get one day a weekend. And depending on what their life is, because we can't make them, we don't necessarily work the schedule, they give us availability, we fill it in, and it's a hit or miss with them.
Are the part-time people, in addition to the twenty-one full-time-
Yes.
-positions?
Yes.
Do the part-time people share the same overhead?
Their overhead's a little bit different, because they don't have benefits, medical benefits, and things of that nature. They do have retirement that does get paid in for them, because they are in the retirement system.
Is it correct, so you're generally using the part-times as substitutes, like when you need coverage for a shift, or if there's a special event, but it's not like the part-times or guys are-
Part-time is difficult to count on, to sit there and say that we're just gonna use part timers for certain things. It depends on their availability. A lot of them work other part-time jobs, a lot of them have a full-time job that is demanding on them, and then their family gets involved, which only allows some of them to work so many hours before they say, wait a second, I'm doing a little too much. But they, they're a great supplement for what we have here in New Paltz. As you know, we have thirty-some events a year, counting parades, different events at the parks, and what goes on in New Paltz. So we really count on them for that purpose, and again, for supplementing the tours and busy nights. We use them quite a bit for that.
Well, adding to staff also require more patrol cars?
I'm sorry?
Do you need more patrol cars?
Yes, we would need one more patrol car, yes. To, the way we work, we assign two to three people to a car. So if we're adding three to four people on, you would have to have another car, that would be for that assignment.
And that's an Ira's footnote here, is that?
Yeah.
It's not included, I don't believe, in your numbers?
No, if you notice on the footnotes, we're estimating one new car. I was questioned about the forty-six thousand dollars, and I point out that that car has to be specially equipped. It's not like it's your car, oh, you need the radar in it, you need the sirens in it, you need the, all the equipment that goes. So an average car for the police department runs about forty-six thousand dollars, because of all the protection and stuff. I explained that to the person questioning, so I'm letting you know in case you think that's a high, it's not high. In fact, it's probably low. Now, and the seven thousand, seventy-five hundred dollars have come for gasoline, I took that straight from the gasoline costs on our average car. I took all, I took all cars, took an average, the cars, the good mileage, bad mileage, and it came to roughly seventy-five hundred dollars a year. So that's where that figure, that's an actual figure based upon invoices. This is not, when I go into my figures, these are not figures I pulled out of the air. I can base every one of these on something actual.
Why wouldn't you have a maintenance number? It seems like you would be able to pull that, shouldn't you?
The problem with pulling the maintenance number was I couldn't get a fair number by going through the bills, because most, all of these things were stuff I got from bills. And then, there's maintenance, some maintenance is covered by warranties, some isn't, some whatever. So I'm just saying, it's not in there. How much could it be? I don't think it could be enough, my personal opinion in going through the bills, was I don't think the maintenance, per se, maintenance, was significantly enough to, you know, change the twelve and a half million, you know, up or down by ten thousand dollars. It just wasn't worth getting into the minutia, so that people start questioning things that really have no direct bearing. I mean, important thing is the thirteen million dollars.
The entire fleet, I believe we budgeted about twenty-three thousand dollars for the entire fleet, for maintenance and servicing through the course of the year. And we have approximately seven mark cars, eight mark cars, and five unmarked cars, and a couple of specialized vehicles as well.
And guessing maintenance, just also probably get rid of the cars every five, seven, certain year, so they're not necessarily-
Yeah, yeah. All different. We look at the unmarked cars, administrative cars, we try to get at least eight years out of them, sometimes ten. We really use them to the fullest extent. The patrol cars, they go through a three-year cycle, and then depending on the condition, we'll buy them, buy them out at the end of a lease, and continue to use them for another year. And then after that, we'll sometimes give them to town departments, that'll use them for highway or different services like that.
And Eileen and Lynn, I don't think you guys were here when Ira and I first chatted, just informally with you all, but we went through this process where we explained, because as I looked through the fiscal impact analysis, that was part of the document, they had the section here where we, you know, estimated new calls, and so on and so forth. And one of the things that we tried to make clear was that, for the police department, a call is not a call is not a call. And to explain that is that we can, where the police can get a call, and it could be a lockout, and that's fifteen seconds. We could get another call at two o'clock in the morning, because there's a bar fight, and that one call is five officers, and three cars. And then after, you know, if there are arrests made, and so on and so forth, and Rob can probably explain what that process is, once you do the intake. You essentially have a call with five officers, or four officers, and then you probably have maybe one or two who are doing intake, or whatever, after you process those folks. So, and then the other part to that equation is, and I, and if I remember correctly from the meeting that we had, where we talked to folks from the rescue squad, they indicated that their calls might go up fifteen or twenty percent. I don't, I don't know if I'm remembering that, that number correctly. But the key point to that is this: When police and rescue receive a call, our officers are first responders. They're emergent, you know, they're, they're trained for emergency response, so most times they go first, because they can usually get there before the rescue squad or the fire department. So they're, they're there to help. But when the police department gets a call, you don't necessarily receive a call from fire or ambulance. So there is, there's a lopsided correlation to calls, when you think of it that way.
Our responses for every emergency-
If you look at the calls, you'll find very interesting, if you check what has been done, give you figures, they took total calls, village and town. Those are about equal. Which Randall says, they're equal in number of calls only. If you take a look at V6, V7, which is the village areas around the, you'll see anywhere from five to six thousand calls of the total village calls. Then you have the thruway. And this is without seven hundred people within walking distance of the bars, and the noise, and everything that's gonna thing. I just want you to understand that you can't, you know, you can't take, well, we had twelve thousand calls, and we're gonna divide twelve thousand calls by whatever number Wilmerite uses, and come up with a figure. It's not a legitimate figure, in my opinion, because, you know, as Randall says, a lockout, the guy runs there, does it, and that's it, you know. What do we do if we have two bar fights, and you got two cars or whatever? That's why we say, do we need another call? Do we need another officer? What do we do? Let the village or town resident get, have a problem, and not be able to do it, because the students have first preference? Just not right. That's why we came up with our particular figures, is to protect, you know, not to protect the big business that's gonna make all this money, but to protect the citizens who have to be delegated and put on a lower level than these people.
Could maybe one of you talk about, and again, you can stop me, if you've already done this before, I can read it someplace else, but how you interface with the SUNY police, and how that works when there's an event either on campus that requires your attention, or if it's in town and it's involving college students, I guess?
We, we do have a great working relationship with SUNY. Unfortunately, over the last year, what has changed is that SUNY police, their jurisdiction is on campus, just like our jurisdiction is New Paltz. There are some guidelines, state law, that allows us to go outside of our jurisdiction for certain type calls, to assist another agency. Same thing with SUNY. We have a memorandum of understanding with them, that allows them to back us up on calls, these protocol that's set up, and we've had that for many years. Again, what has changed over the last year, SUNY police is attempting to get statewide jurisdiction, so that they can have jurisdiction statewide, just like the state police. They are a state agency. However, the SUNY State University Police, they are restricted to their campus. In this process, politics get involved, of course, and you have unions now that, because that was denied. So now they're, the union's saying, well, if that is the case, then we can't go out. It's not that they don't want to, they're great officers, good people, but they can't come off campus unless it's an emergency. So if we have an assault, or something serious, they will come off campus and help us out for an extended, for a certain amount of time. If it's a parade, or a noise complaint, or things of that nature, they can't come off campus. They're not, technically, they're not authorized to for jurisdiction, even though they were doing it for many years with us, helping us out. So that has changed. So again, for an emergency situation, if we're tied up at a serious accident somewhere in town, and we do get an alarm or something, they'll respond to an alarm for us. But again, it has to be something more serious than just, hey, we have a noise complaint on Main Street, our cars are tied up, then you can't send somebody out just for a noise complaint.
And the other thing, the other thing to that, and help me try and explain it, chief and detective, for example, if there is an assault, or robbery, or murder on campus, can you explain the process? Because my understanding is, is that the SUNY campus police wouldn't necessarily have jurisdiction- Because my understanding is, is, is that the SUNY campus police wouldn't necessarily have jurisdiction on a matter like that, would they?
No, they would. On, on campus, they would. We do assist them.
Okay.
Before, they were able to carry handguns and they didn't, weren't issued handguns for a while. They were peace officers. You know, anytime there was a knife call, gun call, or anything of that sort, you know, we were backing them up all the time. Now that they are police officers officially, we don't back them up generally on the simpler calls that may be a weapon involved. However, we do back them up, you know, on occasion, like they would back us up. We had the bank robbery, for example, recently. And they sent us a couple of officers down to help canvass the area, looking for the perpetrator that may have been in the vicinity, may have had a weapon, put in, again, danger to the community and the citizens. So they'll assist us in those type of things. You wanted to add something?
The only thing I wanted to add in regards to the SUNY, they're, they're, even when they do respond, their authority currently is, they don't have the ability to make arrests for single violations in the village. So even when they do come out to assist us, they are somewhat limited in how they're able to do that.
They might just restrain somebody until somebody else is called.
And again, even if they see, if they see a violation taking place, they don't, they can't make that arrest. I mean, they can maybe disperse, but let's say a disorderly conduct, people fighting in the street. They can, they can disperse that and break it up, but they can't make an arrest.
Like a bunch has a body for you, like a police officer body, like if you need bodies, because it's a big bar brawl.
Right, but let's say...
But they're not actually...
They can't arrest anybody.
Really functioning as a, as a police on campus.
And, and, and I guess that was a, and so help me understand that. If, if something were to happen on campus that was super, super serious, you know? God forbid, a murder, for example. Would the SUNY police have investigative ability? And would they process, would, would, would they make an arrest? Would they do the investigate? Or would that be turned over to you guys and the state police or?
It would all depend on the circumstance. They, they do have their own investigator. I believe they still have only one. They have one investigator that does handle their sexual assaults on campus and different felony type of cases. We do work with them quite often in that nature because they only have one detective. So we are usually their first initial backup. With that being said, it doesn't mean that the state police, if it's a gruesome scene and they need some, a crime scene crew to come in, the state police has their forensic unit that we even count on when it comes to a forensic evaluation. Not that, you know, our people get trained in all this stuff, but when you have something serious where you have a big crime scene, you can't compare it to a team of ten, twelve people coming in and doing the crime scene search and technician.
The thing I'd like to point out too is when you're looking at this estimate, it's for officers only. It didn't include dispatches because it's an unknown factor. But we thought about it because we get tremendous amount of noise complaints, quality of life, on that street from the bars to the college. I mean, they're coming in all the time. You weigh at seven hundred unsupervised teenagers. And it's, it, it's got to go up because people are going to be trying to sleep, they're going to be walking down that street, whatever. But it's an unknown figure. It may require none, it may require one. That's something that down the road, if the chief says, look, my, you know, my dispatches can't handle this, you know, because we're handling this and we're letting a fire go by or whatever, because you're on the phone with somebody. It may, it may not be material, but I just want you to know, my figures are officers only.
Right. I, I guess that, that kind of segues a little bit to, to my question. And I'm assuming you guys have looked at the, the Camoin report with this, this table, the two-hundred-and-eighty-eight...
Yeah.
New calls from the project.
Yep.
And, you know, I, I can see how the consultant came up with their two-eighty-eight based on number of folks in the town, number of households, number of new households. So, you know, without profiling...
What page are you on? Is that?
This one here.
Yeah, is that sixteen?
Seventeen. Without profiling, you know, teenager activity and, and what college kids do and how they tend to, you know, they may tend to use more police service than a regular town person. You know, is, is that, I'm, I'm curious if you could elaborate a little bit on, you know, how you came up with four officers? You know, can you estimate what you think the, the number of calls are based on seven hundred new college kids?
But, yeah, we can, but if I may, the number of calls, like I keep coming back to, is not the prime directive as to what goes on. But let me, let me look, look at their figures. Look at their figures that they came up with. First of all, two-hundred-and-eighty-eight calls, then we must have pulled that out of the air. If you look at a hundred, no, I know, I know what they say, but those are just...
You can follow the logic.
But the logic doesn't hold on the whole, because when, when you add a zero to a number, it changes the whole dynamic. But what I'm saying is, if you look at their number, what is it, two million, uh, one million eight-hundred-thirty-two thousand dollars? I don't know where they got the number from, but it's a very interesting number because it doesn't include benefits. So the, the whole, that's, that's why I said, I don't want to go to the number of calls, I want to go to dollars. We know that the, the police budget is, you know, including the fixed expenses and everything else, is somewhere between four and five million dollars, okay? And that includes the overheads. Because, I mean, we got to pay for them, whether, whether Womarite doesn't want to pay for them, doesn't want to let them exist, I can't help that. But the one thing I, I, I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, is they, they came up with their numbers very simply. They called, they asked for what the police budget number is, which is just a number, it's a budget number, what this number was, and they didn't know where to look. It took me to come up with my numbers over a week of research just into personnel. I didn't use, because the way the town budget works, they bury a lot of expenses in areas other than the police department, i.e. benefits, it goes into a general benefit, and you have to go through that whole account and pull out the police department, which is what I did to come up with my numbers. Pension, you have to break it down between the different places, which is what I did to come up with my police numbers. So if Womarite calls and says, wait, what's the police budget? And they say, one-point-eight billion dollars. Yeah, fine, that, that's salaries, and that's not increases. That's nothing, that's just a, a budget figure.
Right. But I, it's not lost on me at all that...
No, it's the same, that they came up with the two-hundred-and-eighty-eight figures. I, I just believe they used fuzzy logic.
Right, the detail that, that Randall and you have both brought up, that a call is not a call. So I'm curious if the, if the chief could elaborate a little bit. If we had a seven-hundred-bed, you know, college student project versus seven-hundred-bed, you know, Woodland Pond Part Two, like, how do you differentiate, you know, the...
Before the chief answers, may I just make one more statement, please? No, you do it. The ambulance corps, because you know the chief is first responder, has estimated another hundred-and-eighty-plus calls. So to take two-hundred-and-eighty-eight calls, what they're really saying, Womarite is saying, oh, we're not going to have many calls, we'll have maybe a hundred calls a year. I just think that figure's out of fantasy land. Okay.
Anybody else? What, what I do, when we were checking some of the other similar apartments in the area, you know, we looked at Southside, which is a, also a student housing. We looked at different apartment complexes, looked at the number of calls there, looked at Meadowbrook, you know, anything that's similar of that type of a make. The thing that is unique about this location, and that's why the numbers are a little bit off, because if they're doing a comparison with an overall townwide call line, and they're coming up with a figure based on averages and percentages of the name of the people. You can't really do that when, when you talk about where this is located. A lot of our calls, evenings and what have it, are stemming from the downtown area, going back the corridors to the campuses. You're adding seven hundred beds in this area where they're going to have to come from town, from the village area, and walking through the same streets that we get numerous calls on weekends. And if we do comparisons on just those calls that we deal with, with kids screaming, kids fighting, not to pick on college kids, because they could be kids that aren't college students, they're just visiting the college students. That is another number that's not included in this. You're talking about seven hundred beds. We've gone to apartments, we've gone to places that there's supposed to be two people there and there's five people living there or at least coming up for the weekends every weekend. So the numbers are really off. And, and, and it is an unknown, I'll grant you, it's an unknown. But all's I can tell you is that when you have weekends, parties, drinking, they become little tornadoes. And you have your criminal mischiefs, you have your fights, you have people calling with people vomiting on their front lawn or, or different things going on. So it is busy. They ask for more patrols in these corridor areas. We can only give so much because we do cover, it's over forty-two square miles for the town and village. We have, if we have two officers working a street in the domestic, on Blue Tark Road. You know, again, this is just another thing that gets them on into it. And you don't know how much time a call's going to be. As we say, a call's not a call. A simple call can end up being, you know, not only the, you know, five officers that are working that are trying to separate witnesses and have five, ten people in custody, sometimes it's, it's, you know, it gets kind of crazy. But then you also have your detectives out. I come out, the lieutenant would come out. So there's just a lot involved. And night activity in our town, you know, it isn't just, you know, and it's not just the fights is, is the point. We've had assaults, we've had shootings, we've had stabbings, attempted murder charges. You know, yeah, this is New Paltz, and we all like to look at New Paltz as a nice, calm community. And it's a great community. But like any community, you have violence, you have robberies, you have the sexual assaults. So this is only going to add to that atmosphere. And when you have another housing unit of seven hundred people, with those people being in town, what does that do to the surrounding cities, Kingston, Newburgh, Poughkeepsie, Allenville, Middletown? It attracts more of them to come to our community. And that's what we, you know, we go out, we have four officers working the night tour, and there'll be something going on in a bar, and we have three hundred people or more in the streets that are fighting and carrying on, and the officers aren't even able to make an arrest because if they try to make an arrest with just four guys or four officers, that ain't going to work out too well. It's going to be a bad situation. We haven't had a riot in New Paltz in a, a long time, although we have many ones. We hope that it doesn't, you know, get to that level, but...
Could you call the state police in a, a case like that?
Yes, and we do. And you have to just, I know a lot of people always want the state or the sheriff, so they'll say, sometimes the sheriff's department, there's two people working in a whole zone of, same thing with the state police. They ride doubles, they don't ride singles. So if there's only two people working out of the Gardner Barracks, the Highland Cars out in the Soaps, Port Union, you know, there's a, a very big waiting process. And if they're tied up, if you ever listen to the nine-one-one frequencies, when there's a pull, you'll hear tied up on an arrest. You know, so although there are other agencies that do assist, and trust me, we count on their assistance. And we use them for everything we can, including parade details and, and events. And they help keep our costs down when we can in those type of situations. But, you know, they're not, they're understaffed themselves.
And, and, you know, we, we focus a lot on, on the costs and the money, but I, you know, I'm going to throw this out and, and a concern that the commission and I have is, there, there's, there's also an issue of officer safety. You know, you, 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 I presume if you, you, you get a domestic, you send two officers, one for the guy, one for the, the woman, to, to perhaps keep them separated. And suppose something happens and his, his, his patrol for, in the overnight shift is, is four officers, and then you have some major disturbance down at, at one of the bars and you got two of your guys out on a domestic, you got two guys trying to control a bunch of kids in the bar, and we see the reports and sometimes the, the force perhaps that might be necessary in order to, to just get a six-foot-tall guy who's drunk to comply with, don't do that, or stop, you know? So I mean, it's, 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 it's a, it's a very dangerous situation. So it's not just a, it's just, it's not just a financial concern. It is also a concern for our officers because, you know, one of my priorities is, like the chief, is that our officers get home at the end of their shifts to their families. So it's also a safety concern for our officers as well.
So if this project was being built on campus, how, what would be, you may not have any jurisdiction on what's going to be on campus. What would be happening off-campus is the same, though?
You would still have that...
That's what you're saying? You still would have the same issues going on off-campus that would be happening?
Yes, correct.
The calls for, if, if they're basing their calls on a number of, at a given location, then you're still going to have all that. And, and it's not always that the college students are the perpetrators, the bad people. I mean, very often, they're the victim. What makes New Paltz, I think, unique, especially at night, is that we are located to, you know, a number of different small cities. And people from those communities do come here. And people that, you know, who have records that are, that are violent individuals. And one of the reasons we find them, that you come into the community, is they have a sense of anonymity here. You know, and there, if, for example, you have somebody who's on parole in the city of Newburgh, very often, they're going to be recognized. They're out and they're about by the officers that are in that, that jurisdiction. They come here and, and they will be here because they're anonymous and...
Mark, do our bars stay open later as well?
I'm sorry?
Do our bars stay open later than those other communities or not?
No, they all stay open till before.
They do, okay.
We had a young lady who was sexually assaulted walking home from a friend's house to, last year, last, last February. She was in, you know, she was a college student, but she wasn't out in the bars, she just happened to be walking home. She was physically accosted, brought behind the residence, and an individual attempted to sexually assault her. He was not from the community. So that's what makes it unique.
One more question. I'm not quite sure, when you're talking about jurisdiction between the different police forces, any, any violation of the general penal code can be enforced by any officer, SUNY, New Paltz and state or...
State and sheriff can make those arrests. SUNY police department cannot make a violation arrest. Even if it occur, if it occurs in the...
On campus, they don't have it.
On campus, they can, off-campus, they cannot.
Off-campus, they can, okay.
See, and also, New York State, where it talks about if a crime is committed, felony or misdemeanor, you can make an arrest outside your jurisdiction. But honestly, with the protocol and how protocol is handled, generally, it's not done that way. You know, I won't, you know, go up in Rosendale, and if I see something in Rosendale, that might be a crime, although I may act and hold somebody until the local police that handles that jurisdiction for the processing of the arrest and what have it. But at least I would be covered under the state law, that I'm acting appropriate under the, under the law. So that if force has to be used, I'm justified. So that's another big issue because if it's only a violation and an officer sees two people fighting and an officer gets out to stop them, and now all of a sudden it becomes a wrestling match and somebody gets hurt, SUNY police didn't have jurisdiction to act on a violation. So that's where the gray area comes into play on, on their end as well.
And one final thing for me is, when you look at, on page sixteen, at least I'm looking at here, when they use the, like, there's a new police operational budget. The, the budget that they have for contractual expenses that they receive from the town of New Paltz twenty-twelve budget of three-hundred-and-six-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars, I think that's under the variable costs.
Page sixteen.
I think it's fif- well, fifteen, on page fifteen, it says, police department variable costs. There's a little box, equipment, fifty-five hundred, contractual expenses, three-oh-one, and total of three-oh-six. And you go here, another thing to keep in mind is that that figure, wherever it came from, did not factor in the rent increases that we have on the police department building that we have. So over a twenty-five-year period, the total operational cost for the police department calculated out at eleven-million-two-hundred-ninety-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars and eighty cents.
But that's for the whole...
That's for the whole, for twenty-five years, so...
The reason that we did that was because they use three-hundred thousand. And for example, the contract that was made with the people that rented, says it's got to have a four percent increase every year. You got electric is going to be increasing, gasoline's going to be increasing, like all that figures, Womarite just says, oh, everything's going to stay the same. And I just want to point one thing about the two-hundred-and-eighty-eight. I may be wrong, but I read the fiscal, whatever it was, there's a page in it that says that the UPD is going to be covering the campus. That page is still in there. So if they use that concept, I should be sure it's hexed in with a...
University police.
But that's what's in the, that's what's in their form that they sent out. Or the, this one that I got. And was signed, it was signed by the chief of police from the UPD.
It still indicates that UPD would be handling calls for the university police.
That was, that was part of the fiscal impact analysis, where you got your two-hundred-and-eighty-eight.
What's the date on that one?
That's the only one I got, so...
This was, this was, uh, no, I don't know.
I haven't seen anything new. I'm just saying, i- i- if that was their concept, when they did the fiscal impact, I could see where they would come up with two-hundred-and-eighty-eight because they figured how much it's going to be off-campus. I don't know where they got their figures. They, you know, they, we, as you know, we asked to sit down so we could kind of understand what was going on. And Womarite actually refused to talk to the commission or any of the special services. They said, you want to, you know, you want to talk to somebody, talk to the planning board, they're the only ones that we'll talk to. So we're working as best we can. As I said, in my figures, at least I know, that my starting, that my figures came from actuals. And I actually went to the W threes that were filed with the federal government to see about salaries. I went to, I went to the... I went to, I went to the, to every hospitalization plan, every EAP plan, every benefit plan, and picked out the officers' names. So I set up a schedule by officer. I could tell you for the year that I did this, how much every officer cost me, including every cent that we had to pay for him.
For the 25-year projection, what escalation rate are you using for the salary and for the benefits?
Okay, I use a 3% escalation rate.
For both?
No, no. It's for the salary increases, I use a 3%.
That's what's in the current police contract?
That's what's in the contract, and that's what they did over the last three years. It's a pretty safe assumption, you know, particularly, it could be higher than that. You know, it's a good year, and there's a union, huh?
You have steps in there also for the first.
All right, let me explain, yeah. So what I have is you look at salary one, year one, for the first officers, $41,000. That includes certain step, you know, certain starting point with a slight increase for overtime. Right, for overhead or the other benefits, I took that 2011 figure of every officer that we had, calculated how much we paid every officer for benefits, divided it by the salary, to come up with a percentage of overhead. That was actually what we paid. And that was based upon what we actually paid. So if you go to my report, or, you know, my base report, and you looked at Officer XYZ, it will tell you exactly what we paid for that officer for that year. Use that as a starting point, because you had to start somewhere. The overhead, I varied from 70-something percent, I went to 72% after a certain period of time, because there are certain things that are gonna increase. Now, as salary increases, the overhead rate is going to decrease because you're taking a rate at a higher salary. So if everything remains equal. But if you notice on the report, one of the things that I was very specific about on the overhead was that it's assuming that major medical insurance increases aren't gonna be there as a result of the ACA, which is what everybody's saying, that insurance benefits are gonna go up anywhere from 100 to 150% as a result of ACA. Well, you know, I can't figure that, that's why I just made it as a note. And it also assumes that there's not gonna be any more spikes in pension. In 2012, the pension went from $300,000 to over $600,000. That was a 66% spike. Remember, we don't control pension. This is the state. The state sends the town a bill, and it's, you now owe us X amount of dollars. Right, what I did was broke down the Police Department pension from the rest of the pensions, again, in my figures. So again, I have to make the presumption that we're not gonna get another 66%. But I want people aware, this is what happened a year ago, and it happens again.
Right, but then some years securities markets do well, and you don't have to.
Well, I said the year before, the year before, which is the base, which was the base calculation that I used for the last few years, it's been roughly $300 to $300,000. I didn't make a major adjustment for the $660,000, but I wanted it noted that this could happen, and it's not in my figures. Whereas my figures adjust for changes. Wilmerite's figures that I saw just said, well, it's gonna cost $5,000, and nothing's gonna change.
So what's the percentage escalation for the benefits?
I don't have that with me. I can get it via the next.
And then what's in the benefits bucket, like health insurance?
Health insurance, pension insurance, SUI, disability, state unemployment insurance, due to federal unemployment insurance, EPA, counseling. I don't have the list with me. But any benefit that you can think of is in that benefits. You know, I mean, they've got the golden packages, no question about it. What's we call it, health exams, you know, and all this other good stuff. As I said, if I had, if you want, I can bring a copy of every one of my schedule, you know, of the schedule and what all those benefits were. I didn't bring that with me because I didn't think anyone was gonna ask me specifically what the benefits were. But they are benefits that we are, by contract, have to pay, or by state law have to pay.
What is ACA?
EPA?
ACA.
Oh, that's Affordable Care Act, that's Obamacare. The official name is ACA. And all I, again, I didn't make adjustments for it, but all I hear, and that's why I wanted it noted, because like I said, the big, one of the biggest expenses is the medical costs. It runs somewhere around $18,000, $19,000 per officer. Just as the plan is now. I mean, Susan made some adjustments and got it down a little bit, but you're talking about $18,000, $19,000 an officer now. And in my calculations, which I didn't do here, we also have to pay for the retirees. So I mean, that's a big, big figure. But it wouldn't be fair to add that to the cost of a new officer. In other words, if, let's say my figure, I use my first figure, 72%. It doesn't include the retired officers in medical benefits. That was left out, because it wouldn't be fair to say, well, we got a new guy coming in, and I'm gonna use a rate that includes retirees. That's gotta be distributed over the rest of people without the Wilmerite. I try to do this as fair as possible, because the one thing I didn't want was somebody to come back to me like I'm doing, and say, this figure is dumb, where'd you get this figure? It blows the whole concept. So I try to make it as conservative as I could. I verified my $13,000 figure in a different way. I just took the total cost of the Police Department, divided it by the number of officers that we should have, and I came up with an average of $77,000. That was adding, you know, what I could. So I came up with an average of $77,000, $87,000 per officer. But that's, but that's including everything else. But it puts it in line with my $67,000. So that was my check, to see if I was getting a reasonable figure, which is what I planned to do.
George, you had a question, too?
Yes, I do remember. The, at one point, there was discussion about the staffing that the SUNY PD has. They have a resident population, as I recall, about 3,500 students?
I don't know what their population is.
This is for the chief. So what I'm curious about is, can you acquaint the board with the staffing that SUNY has for that population? And how much of the time and effort, if you know, is devoted to the residential population there?
I don't know their breakdown. They have 24, their officers count is 24. So there are three more than what we have. I do not know what their breakdown is per call, for the residents' calls, compared to, you know, the classroom areas, the library, things of that nature. I could try to get that information for you.
Because I'm curious if they have a similar staffing pattern to yours?
Yeah, their staffing pattern is similar. They don't have sergeants, they have lieutenants, which are basically like our sergeants. They don't have any sergeants. So they go from their patrol officers, and they have lieutenants.
But would they load staff to these different tours similar to the way you do with night?
They're 12-hour tours now?
They run a different schedule. They are on 12-hour tours. And I think they do three 12-hour tours, and somewhere in there, they mix in eight hours. I'm not exactly sure how it is, but they work mostly 12-hour tours.
But it is interesting that they have a force the same size as ours with 3,000 people.
There is, I've heard of general staffing.
No, they don't use part-time.
Not a mandate for the general staffing recommendation about 1,000. One officer per thousand, general population?
It's changed, so I'm not really sure what it is right now. I know the last time they did a staffing, DCJS, Department of Criminal Justice, did a staffing survey of our agency was '99?
No, no, no.
Might be the last time, and we were understaffed then, and population has only grown, and we've actually decreased.
But back then, they came off the list, one that I saw, chief, who said that you should have a force of somewhere, I'm not gonna hold myself to it, between 26 and 30. This was at the time when you had 21, all right? So this is from the Department of Justice. And that was, I think, eight or nine or 10 years ago, when our population was nowhere like it, where crime was not like you like it, as it is now. I mean, I looked at the crime statistics from the state for 2012 in New Paltz, it's gone up.
So that's roughly two per thousand? Yeah, 16,032 would be super thousand.
Yeah, you know, it's, the idea is, is that you don't want an officer hurt because you're understaffed. I mean, what does an officer do if he's at a bar fight? And we got two officers there, and the sergeants in the cars, and a man with gun comes down into town. Where's he gonna go there by himself? And what's gonna happen when the officers are in the process of interviewing for a noise complaint down that street? You know, which will happen. And, you know, a fire breaks out, or a fight breaks out, what is he supposed to do? Say, oh, excuse me, you know, and he's gonna leave the whole thing. But meanwhile, he's tied up, he still has, he's not patrolling. I mean, the whole key to safety in the town and village is patrol. And the reason that officers now use cars, instead of, you know, just working like the old days when I was a kid, is because you can't cover that kind of town. You can't cover the kind of coverage you can get walking. You need a car. Because you cover much more, you can see, you know, as long as you're looking, you can see. And if you're already in the village, and a fight breaks down at P&amp;G's or the Oasis, you're already there.
Do bike patrols at all?
We do when we can, when the manpower allows. Because we've been down, we're starting to get that going again. And actually, last summer, I actually put, assigned a part-time officer to the corridor areas, going back to campus because of so many complaints that we're receiving. You know, and even that, when you only put one officer out there, it's difficult because one officer's out walking the back streets by himself, a fight breaks out, because there's so many people. I mean, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic that goes back and forth to the campus and the different housings that are out there now. And, you know, we can only do so much with bike patrols and what have you, because, again, if there's only two officers working, or even if there's three officers working, and two are tied up at, you know, an accident or a domestic, and then another thing occurs, the officer on the bike's not gonna get, you know, 12 miles out in a.
No, they'd have to relocate it to the town at night or something.
Yeah, so, and to assign, years back, we used to do that, where we'd assign somebody to the main street zone, then somebody to north and south. You really can't do that, because we don't have enough manpower to dedicate, you know, somebody just to Main Street, and somebody just to the South Sector. And unless we have 28 to 30 people, then we can put five people on a shift, and we can work it out that way a little better. But at this point now, right now, the downtown area, the reason why we put like five people on the night tour on the busy nights is because of the downtown bar area. You're not gonna resolve a fight situation when you're just sending two officers, and there's 20 people rolling around the streets.
Yeah, if I may, I had asked this lady to come speak to you about that strip that we're talking about walking, because she's been complaining, she came, no, she came to the commission.
I know who you're talking about.
Yeah, well, she's right. If the DND has increased, which is what she's saying, then this is a problem. Because she calls, the officer dispatches the DND. Now, we've gotta follow them to find out where they are. And this isn't coming from us. This is not from the chief or whatever. This is from residents, and this is becoming a group of residents who have this problem. And again, I'm talking 700 unsupervised adults. Let's say they're all gonna be there, but it's gonna have to have an effect. It can't not have to have an effect. And if we have to protect the residents of New Paltz, you know, I don't care, you know, again, I don't care whether they build that dorm. They don't build the dorm, that's not my thing. What I am concerned about is the taxpayers of New Paltz having to come up with $13, $14 million over the terminus project, just like they did with every other IDA project, and you people know it. Every other IDA project, they went with the IDA with all kinds of figures that came out of Fantasyland. They went to the planning boards for the village with all kinds of figures that came out of Fantasyland. And what happened? The village residents, in the cases of the three major projects, wound up footing the bill and subsidizing. And, you know, right now, this is, the commission is involved in it only because we're requesting the police protection. They did the same thing. They never answered, requested anything, and they went by the fact that the one project says, ah, well, what if we need one policeman a month? We're gonna only need you a lot. Nobody went, I wasn't involved in it at that time, but nobody went to the people. Just that Wilmerite didn't wanna talk to the people involved.
Oh, to show you how cheap I am, I'm assuming, I'm assuming that Detective Sergeant Mukasey is here on overtime, and we need to go.
Could I ask a question that's totally out of left field and has nothing to do with Wilmerite? What would be the effect if, say, two of the bars closed? If there were that fewer bars?
You'd probably just have more crowded bars. More crowded bars with the same number of students.
Or you could go with Mr. Cuomo, who wants to put a bar on campus.
I think you're, you're gonna see, you would see more off-campus parties. You would see, you know, and that sometimes, I think, poses a more difficult, that's even more difficult to control. The one thing you have with the bar is that you have a staff that's willing to work with us. You know, again, we can control that situation a lot more easily than you can control a house party with the same sort of people.
You have a little bite to it as well because of the state authorities' involvement. So when there's a bar situation, and it becomes an unruly location, again, bothers, fines, suspensions.
Yeah, they don't wanna lose their license.
And they can't tell us, no, we can't come in. A house party could be a different situation. And we've actually had officers that have retired from injuries that have been to house parties, that turned on the officers, and the officers were jumped and what have you. So it is a more dangerous situation where if you're at a bar, as Mukasey had said, the staff is actually pretty good with working with us, and it is extra people that are there to help us, not work against us.
Which makes you wonder, and I, you know, I don't know what the, I know that there's a, is there a bus that's gonna be running from that facility to the?
School? No?
The scheduling doesn't currently permit that.
No.
They don't. I mean, I think that would be great if there actually was a bus that, you know, ran in the later hours. Something that the transportation would be working on.
And I just, one statement before I go, just to give you food for thought. When we're asking, talking about four more officers if necessary, I want you to keep in mind, please, that we had at one point 24 officers. And because of retirements, injuries, we were down to 20 at one point. So what happens when you have these 700 more people, and people retire and were left without the officers? Not only do we have the four, but we don't even have enough to cover what we have. Thank you.
Well, thank you for all the work you've put into this. We really appreciate.
And if you have questions, feel free to.
Yeah, just give a ring a call if you want any more details about my schedules, the percentages, or whatever, what I use to be more than happy to have an interview with you.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Maybe segues us into where we are with our fiscal impact analysis person. Do you have any idea? Well, Michael?
Yeah, I got a, an email from Mike.
I just asked the question where, you know, where we were with the fiscal impact consultant. Let's just go, keep going.
Dave, do you know?
George, Dave?
Do you know where we are with the fiscal impact consultant? With the hiring, retaining somebody?
It's retained last, the end of last week. And there was a person that said she's studying today. He's coming up this way tomorrow, and he's going to be here at 2:00 tomorrow afternoon.
Who retained?
Who did we retain?
Who did, who retained?
CGR?
Yeah.
Oh, who made this?
Mike.
Oh, Mike.
Guy's name is Paul Bishop, and he's coming up, and he's trying to set up meetings with both police chiefs tomorrow morning. And then Mike is probably gonna be available tomorrow afternoon.
What's his name again?
Paul Bishop.
Paul Bishop.
Mike's gonna meet with him tomorrow at 2:00, if Mike is back.
But he's coming anyway? You're saying he's coming up anyway, so?
He's coming up anyway. Because I'm available to meet tomorrow afternoon, if Mike, if that works for Mike's schedule. Good. It's 2:00 here.
About two boards, you're done?
Okay, excellent.
That's what you're interested in, so that's, that's good.
Yep, okay. So, thank you for asking.
Yeah, it seemed to be the natural segue, so.
Gets us onward. Put this with my other papers. So the next element of our agenda is more site plan discussion, and we have Spider here and Martin, and to discuss the, a number of things, I suspect. So if you'd like to come up and. I'm actually a little vague as to what we're doing exactly. There's been so much talk about landscaping and the impact on the buffers and the wetlands, and this, that, and the other.
Jordan, wasn't this, you guys were basically. Jordan, wasn't this, you guys were basically rescheduled from, from last month? I think you were booked, somehow something came up and you couldn't attend, or Spider, you couldn't attend, so that's why I think you're here tonight?
Something, right.
There was, there was an exchange of emails, as I recall, or I think Spider sent.
Right, we've been, we've been exchanging.
Well, originally, Mike had assigned it to you and Augusta, but then his latest email, he, he.
Shifted around.
Shifted it around. So, you know, I've, I've gone over it mostly. But I don't know if we're discussing the DEIS here, I think we're just, the FEIS. I think we're still talking about the site plan and how the.
Yeah, I think we've gotten into the site plan a little bit. The FI, the FEIS, transitioning to the site plan is far as something that we're examining and decided what we've done with and what we still have to deal with.
So, you were talking about bigger picture issues?
That's the framework of where we're going and how we're trying to get there. Since the last time talks, there has been this other thing that's come up about the water treatment.
Right, and we got your, your most recent thing, the ecological assessment of the water supply parcel and.
Right. Yeah, that's the last, the last piece of work I did.
Mm-hmm. And, you know, you refer to a map, but is this a map we have?
The map that, that.
It's one of the exhibits?
Well, there's one that's an exhibit, this.
Yeah.
Which is F eleven fourteen from the FEIS. The trouble with this particular map is it doesn't, it shows the site, you know, the housing and that. But it doesn't really show the JAM parcel, as it's called, J A M of New Poles, where the wells are and where the water main comes in from to the, you know.
Where it's into the site.
Site, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's too bad that.
The only map that I have of is the one that Mike more, you know, if we were out there a few weeks ago.
Yeah.
It's a big thing, I'll unfold it, but it doesn't tell you very much. Yeah, look, look at that, see all the, you know, big circles there?
Mm-hmm.
Those are the wells, second wells. And that's where, that's where the water comes from there. They said to be bedrock well, which I think we agree it's during in a way because
So, it's an.
That's a bedrock aquifer, it's more isolated from other sources of water and other receiving areas of water, like, like the wetland up here.
So, it, it isn't really related to the water table? The kind of thing you hit if you dig a hole?
Right, I don't think, no, I don't think it's related to that. Yeah.
Do you have any answer?
Yeah, I mean, there's the hydrogeological report answers that. Part of the pump testing, the wetlands, to make sure that there was no connection there.
Right, there's no, so there's no connection there. The same.
Well, the ground, the groundwater that goes into the wetlands through the springs is more of a perch situation.
Oh, yeah, that, that thing's just popping out, it's right up on the top of that.
It's an impervious surface, but the, the well, the well, the bedrock wells are, you know, hundreds of feet down. And so, it's, it's a different water regime that you're pulling the well water from.
So, you were asked, though, to consider an adjacent eight acre parcel, which is not part of the water treatment facility, it's not part of where the storage tank is going to be, it's not where the, the pipe is going to be dug to pipe anything in, it's just adjacent and we're concerned about affecting it or.
Isn't this a sewer treatment area? This is a separate part, that's the sewer treatment parcel, is it not?
No, the wa, the water root is.
No, he's talking about a water supply parcel.
Right, which is the one across the street, though.
Yes.
Up on the hill.
Right, that was.
Right.
We, we have, we have this water line that comes up like that.
Yeah, so where is this additional eight acre parcel with the swamp on it?
Right here, is this one, this is a well interior.
Okay, so that's adjacent and downhill of the pipe?
Yeah, actually, we located these wetlands to be sure that the water main will be far away and will not affect that environment.
Okay, I just never saw that spelled out immediately. So, I was wondering why all the discussion of, of the interesting wetland, and it looks really neat. I had no idea there was anything like that behind the houses.
North Country Ecological Associates, as part of the FEIS, included a biodiversity assessment of that parcel and that wetland. And I was basically just double checking on what they had presented.
Uh-huh.
Because I had found their assessments to be a bit sketchy and not really covering all the information that you might want to have in order to make a proper biodiversity assessment. But having looked at it, and in my report, as I said, I found their wetland delineation to be perfectly fine, it could have been finer in the sense of.
Some seeps, right?
Yeah, capturing some of the, the wetland, especially the seeps up near the top of the slope. But, so we're drawing a straight line between these two GPS points, these two flags. And the wetland boundary certainly not a straight line. But since there's no development proposed for that or encroaching on it, there isn't really any chance that I can see in the future that you're going to have some violation of the wetland law, if, you know, if it were brought back into effect. And that was one of the things that you seemed to be concerned about. When, when that happens, are we, are, there going to be, you know, issues with the wetland law? Sort of after the fact of whatever is done on that parcel that we're talking about and on anything else around it that could affect that wetland? That was, that was the issue there. I, I don't really see that there is anything.
Well, not, but isn't this, this parcel is obviously slated for development at some point, too? I think that was discussed at one point, is the, this is, right? So, this is going to be, and then this is in between our industrial zone and South Cut Road, right? Isn't the property in between?
There's wellhead areas there that have to be protected and.
Okay.
The town has, right?
Up on top of that building, there's a couple of other storage tanks there.
To exist, a village tank, one of them is used by the town.
Okay, but anyway, those are municipal, yeah, it's kind of good.
So, Dave, one of the questions.
And there'll be the third one, right, which is the.
One of the questions I had was, is there a wellhead protection area around each? Do we have a diameter that's, there's a requirement for wellhead protection around each thing, and how big is that? Because I know.
State health requirement, requirements.
It's a hundred, it's a hundred-foot radius ownership, two hundred-foot radius zone of control. It's going to be met either by ownership or by easement.
Two hundred-foot zone.
Two hundred-foot radius of control.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be beyond, but it has to be.
That's pretty small.
About four hundred feet across.
That's pretty big.
Four hundred feet across, okay, from the wellhead in the center, two hundred on either.
It's both the outside wall.
Bigger.
The radius is two hundred.
Right, so it's about like a.
Nacre.
It's a little bit bigger than that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it makes me wonder when I see people's wellheads about twelve feet from the road.
Well, it, it, that's a public water supply requirement.
Oh, different for public than private, okay.
Don't care about private.
Things calculated.
Uh-huh.
It's pi R squared.
Yeah.
There you go. Many but.
Good.
Is he concerned about their own well?
Okay, well, that, thank you, this, that makes.
Does that show the construction?
Now I understand what this was all about, and it makes a lot of sense.
We need, we need a much better mass of all.
Yeah.
Because it's eight acres, right?
The plant, the plant.
So, that's the thing that screwed me up.
The design plans show the construction.
The design.
They show the construction.
Right.
They were part of the package.
So, there's no, so there's no intrusion of the construction easement into either a wetland, state, federal, potential, local, or the buffer?
Right, that, that's correct, yeah.
One thing that kind of concerned me was the description in the FEIS, it's a little sketchy about some of the things, right?
Uh-huh, what page would, would that be on?
I think it's in, it's in, appendix N.
Oh, okay, let me.
Appendix N is the one that talks about this, this wall.
Oh, water supply calculation, I think.
But it just, it, it'll, it says things like, oh, but it's going to be up on the hill somewhere. It's not very specific about, I mean, maybe, I don't think there was a, a map that really showed it. It was certainly not, certainly not this, because this doesn't show what's east of Route thirty-two.
Yeah, there is a, there is a little map, it's one of the exhibits, which on my screen is impossible to read, but.
Which is number fourteen exhibit.
And those, those are.
Oh, okay, so they.
Yeah, so it's in different location.
Right, and it's got a real photograph.
This is a, this is.
That's, that's as much better.
Plans show that, and you can see that water main going through the old orchard.
Okay.
Far away from those wetlands. And those are the locations.
Yeah, right.
But the plan, the site plan is more accurate.
No, this isn't the right.
Yeah, so this is.
F two, there's fourteen, that's a good.
Water main to water.
Offsite water main, ah, it's fourteen A, not.
It's both, they're both.
This is their stand, right?
It's exhibit, uh, two dash fourteen.
Through the open and then through.
Of the DEIS.
The orchard, that orchard goes all the way down here, right?
There's a well.
And one is three hundred feet, so it's about.
Oh, yeah.
Eight, seventy feet.
Well, let me, let me enlarge it here. I've got my fifth neck, I don't.
This is the one.
Oh, that's better.
There's that. So, this one, there's all the stuff.
Yes.
And there's a, the design plan as well.
So, the wells are scattered around a fair amount, and they're going to have to be pumped uphill to the place where the water's going to be treated and stored, and then it'll come downhill again through the water main?
That's right.
Uh-huh.
That's right.
Yeah, that's, that's gravity, so that's.
Wells, wells are production. The production wells, there was eight drilled, but only five are usable as production wells.
Mm-hmm.
Because they didn't supply enough water, so there's one or two.
Yeah, and this shows the wetland and it shows the buffer and everything, that's very clear.
That's right.
Well, if you got, if you've got a really strong supply there in the bedrock, in order to get the flow up where you want and spread it out to your capacity so that you can actually provide an adequate supply, then you, then you are certainly going to need more wells in different places. Otherwise, you just can't pull it out of there fast enough.
And the, you know, there's a drawdown with each of the wells, you have to consider that, and the proximity to each other. So, when they do the testing, then they do calculations under drought condition, which is six months.
Eighteen days.
Yeah, six months, rainfall, rainfall. And so, they do the calculations to make sure there'll be enough to, and then they, they also make, do a calculation assuming that the highest production well is out of service. So, you have four pumps, three pump, four pumps running, there's five wells. And if the, the strongest of the pumps goes down, or wells goes down, then you still have plenty of water to, to serve the property.
Yeah, I think we've discussed the water and feel that the, the water is adequate to serve the property. And so, the, the whole water system is linked to this project by a series of easements or contracts or.
Easements, there's, there's easement along the water line, both the water lines and the, the line that comes back down to serve the project. So, the wells pump the water up to the treatment plant up here.
Mm-hmm.
After the water's treated, it goes into the tank, the storage tank, and then it flows by gravity back down to the site.
Uh-huh.
That's the.
And the, the place where the treatment and the tank are, are they also sort of leased or easemented? Or are they actually owned by Wilmerite?
It's all easement.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Is the wellhead in easement?
Yes.
So, you're not actually going to.
No, I think we would own the wellhead and then the easement access.
Access easement.
Access easement.
It may, access and maintenance.
And you'll have an easement, it'll be a two hundred foot?
Then there's a separate, there's a separate access easement for the access to the, to serve, you know, rather than you have to come up through the hill here.
Right.
We're going to bring a, a road in from Apolline, I think it's Apolline. Just, just, which is, you know, much closer to a flat route as opposed to going up the hill. It's just better access, that's all.
I'm completely unfamiliar about how these easements work. Are they easements between you and J A M? Or is, is the easement linked inextricably with the project, no matter who owns it? How does that work?
Yeah, they could be transferable, you know, George could answer, but not I, but.
I can tell you if Tim answers correctly.
The easement's run with the land, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't be owned.
It's transferred to the town at some point.
Uh-huh.
Do we get an A, George?
You do.
Okay, and, and so, it would always be there as an easement for the water, no matter what's going on around it?
Yeah, it's perpetual easement.
Uh-huh.
And the servicing would be then your responsibility, who's the servicing responsibility? And what, what responsibility, if any, does the town have on that? Do they, are they allowed to use easement? If there's any reason.
The easement would run between the two private parties.
Okay.
There's discussion happening now with the town as it relates to future ownership of the facilities. So, that would have to be part of the discussion.
Okay, and the improvements of these also tax exempt, or looking for part, this to be part of the pilot, or is this a different? Different?
It will be different.
It's not part.
I don't believe we'll be seeking tax exemption for.
It's not part of the, no, it's the treatment.
Well, you would own it, I mean, it would be owned by the chairman, right?
Well, yeah.
But Tim, Tim, Tim could answer this better, but it's, it's, the pilot's per unit.
That's a separate.
No, the owner would be the property owner, who would grant us an easement over the property to construct the infrastructure.
But it would still be owned by the property, they would have, their, their property would be burdened by an easement,
which goes to our benefit.
Whatever it is, it is taxes on that, right.
Okay, is that spelled out somewhere in, in the DEIS or the FEIS or something? Uh-huh, okay. Um, the, I didn't ask before, you know, with the little treatment plant, I, the things that the town owns up there, the tanks are just tanks, but does the treatment plant make any noise?
Yes.
Is it a, you know, a noise that? Is it a, you know, a noise that, how noisy is it?
The thing is, the thing is noise would be if the, you know, if the generators come out, or when they operate the generators, once, uh, once a month, usually just to exercise it.
Mm-hmm, but, but in the FEIS, it does say that it does make noise and that it'll be maintained or something, but I don't, I think it'd be probably better to indicate some quantifiable thing, like if it's above us, you know, it says something like, it does make noise, low noise, it says, and will, it's not anticipated, but.
Okay. Do we have a? I think that's. I think that's answered in the, on our reports in Morris about the specific plant.
It is.
But your FEIS, basically, when you identify it, you just said that it's just, you didn't reference anything, that just says it'll be low noise.
Do you have a decibel level at the source?
We'll, we'll give you a decibel level.
I think it should be something quantifiable that we could say, yes, it's gonna be above this or it's not, because otherwise low noise doesn't mean anything. And the same thing was, it didn't say about the generator then, yeah.
I've seen it, it's low, they have a shroud on it, as I recall, and it's like sixty right there at the source, so the property line is pretty.
Yeah. Without, without any kind of screening or any kind of attenuation thing?
It has a shroud, it has a noise shroud on it.
Okay. And it's sixty outside the shroud, is what you're saying?
This close.
Right at the source, right, so at the property line, it's.
Okay. Probably, mm-hmm, okay, okay.
Not much of a, not above the.
Yeah, so it looks like.
So you don't think there's anything that needs to be defined there, that low noise is gonna be maintained, or should?
It is defined in that report, I believe it's also referenced on the FEIS.
No, I'm, I'm, I, the FEIS basically says it's, it's a low noise, and that's.
What the, what the site plan rule typically does when there's a generator involved is say it's a certain type, with a decibel output, and like you say that.
Right. That's, okay, right, that's okay, that's what I was looking for, yeah. I had a question also about, um, this is, uh, the fire capacity is coming from the ponds, is that correct?
No, it's coming from, from us, yeah.
It's come this, so then the, the fire capacity, when it said the ponds in the FEIS, it's just supplemental, if it's.
It was something, no, no, not at all, it's nothing to do with our, our operation of our project, it was a request by the, uh, fire department to have a dry, um, hydrant installed there, so they could utilize that water, and we're putting that hydrant in at the road and turn off, you can actually see it there.
Okay.
So they can pull in and pump out of the, uh, out of the pond itself, that's nothing to do with our operation.
They want to fill their, they want to fill their pumper trucks.
Okay, yeah. No, okay, no problem, um, and then there was something indicated that there was a discussion about gray water and you, that the lead agency said we didn't want that somehow, did we say that?
Don't recall that.
Yeah, okay, it's on page.
No, any discussion of gray water.
It was, page forty-one.
I don't know if he's.
It was Craig.
He would say it was just not feasible.
It wasn't feasible because you had to put in two separate lines for it, I think, or, I, I don't, he's not here to answer the questions, I don't want to answer for him.
Okay, okay.
Well, making a comment.
Well, it said, it, it said the lead agency, so.
I, I believe when the applicant wrote the FEIS, they wrote it, that if you would be saying these things.
That's right.
Okay.
But there was some degree of presumption.
Right, okay. Okay, right, because I, I still would, what to see, at least for watering plants around, or, you know, I've seen them, uh, using condensate from, uh, air conditioning units, it's claimed, captures it, using that for watering or something rather than dumping it, um, so. I think there was something, maybe this is relative to spider, I had something about, um, that you're gonna, I guess the agreement would be that you're gonna be able to evaluate the invasive species, you're gonna be using, um, a separate entity plus a local person to evaluate three years after the project. That you'll have somebody kind of evaluating the invasive species and what the situation is, and again, I think probably we should quantify that in terms of occupancy or final COs or TCOs, when that actually starts, and, um, yeah, and then, uh, and then also going back, and I think we started touching on this the other day, was about pesticide herbicide, um, use? And what's practical for licensed haulers, and I'm not sure that that would necessarily be something that, uh, everybody would agree, you know, what's practical or what's, so again, I think we probably would want somebody to be monitoring that and or have a discussion with whoever's gonna be applying that, um, and not just a licensed, you know, whether it's spider or somebody else, that somebody else is, has eye on, on when, who's determining what's practical and what can, you know, how much and when they're using it. And I think it was mostly in terms of poison ivy and, uh.
Invasive.
Yeah, I mean, our, our basic, uh, elimination of, of invasive species is, we're stripping off the topsoil.
Yeah. Moving it into berms.
And putting it into berms, then we're covering it with, uh, clean topsoil because of the, um, arsenic, pesticide, elements.
Right, but that's not happening everywhere on the site, there are extensive areas that will be undisturbed.
Well, uh, the areas where, yeah, but most of the areas where the invasives are, it is happening, I mean, there's that many invasives up along the front, um, there is a lawn area there, it's mainly in the, the orchard area, the abandoned orchard area.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we're talking about two different thing, one is the DDT and arsenic in the soil, and then one is the herbicide pesticide application for invasives.
Right. Right.
So you just referred to the arsenic in the soil and covering it with topsoil, but I think you're also doing it for invas, yeah, I think you're doing that also.
But it also covers the invasives that are already growing there.
Yeah, well, that, that would happen, that would happen naturally, you, when you cut off the topsoil there, and then put it in the burr and bury it, you'll be getting rid of it, getting rid of the, yeah, smothering it.
These seeds do it to me.
Smothering it, right.
Assuming that they're always there.
Okay.
Yeah, because, you know, sometimes things appear to be at cross purposes, because there's a lot of discussion about habitat for amphibians, and yet, if it's possible to be using herbicides to remove invasive species, a lot of amphibians are extremely sensitive to the chemicals and herbicides, so.
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, I think av- avoiding herbicides as, as much as possible is, is just a goal of the whole project.
Yeah, but I don't see any specific commitment to that. It's, it's kind of a, it says, you know, we'll try and do it, but if it doesn't work, we'll still use, um, toxins, we'll reintroduce toxins if that's what's necessary, uh, to, to manage, uh, invasive species. But, um, it doesn't really say that, you know, and it doesn't give a formula for how it's being done, or, or even a proposal.
I, if I may, I, I think if toxins were used, it would be according to the New York State P E C guidelines.
But that's not sufficient, because we. Right, but what, what that does is tell you what you can do, the question of telling the contractor what he should do, is, I think, what the board's getting at. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm, right. My question is, when you contract with a contractor now for your other sites, do you give them some direction as to what practices you want them to employ and priorities? So for example, if, if spider says, in this particular area, you should really avoid the use of herbicides to affect amphibians, and that's the plan for that area, can you contractually say you have to follow this unless you obtain approval?
I don't know if I put that in the contract necessarily, but I think we've identified with spider, a lot of those sensitive areas that we would take additional measures to, you know, ensure that those things aren't done, like, I think we've done already through the PASM, but I don't see it being a, a major issue.
And. Yeah, we, we buffer those sensitive areas enough that they should not be affected.
Right, but I guess the question I was asking, that I thought you had nods in the affirmative, or that when this comes up, that we have somebody, you know, sa- saying, okay, somebody's making a call saying, it's overrun now, and we're gonna use pesticides or herbicides, and I'm gonna determine, maybe the, um, the license operator, I'm gonna determine what, and I'm, I'm suggesting that now we have somebody else saying, you know what, maybe, you know, put their head to the, spider's gonna say, you know what?
Well, I, I anticipate, like, we've done this in the past other projects, I mean, individuals like spider, and this, these guys can be, me, work together for the whole project until it's, you know, until you get a C O anyways, and so I fully would anticipate him being part of that process, and that's what you're suggesting, of course, we're, you know, we're acceptable to that.
Well, beyond the C O, it's, there's a three-year window after, yeah, it would be afterwards as well, you know, it would, yeah.
Yeah, sure. Okay. We, we think we generalized, I think we generally took, actually, in response, I think, I think it might have been your concern of specifically saying, Mr. Barber is that consultant.
Right, okay.
We said, we will work with whomever the town board or the planning board determined as the appropriate person for that.
Right, it was a little bit more general in years.
We generalized it after, I think this comment was made, um, a few months back, was that, because we did reference, you know, working with spider, then you wanted to take his specific name out, and we said, generally, we'll work with whomever is recommended.
The, the actual, the way it reads is that your licensed contractor, we can't commit to that, your licensed contractor will take care of it, so what we're saying is to add something back in there that says, and you'll work in conjunction with.
Sure.
I can probably give you the long tails.
That's, that's, sure, I think, fine.
That's, yeah.
George, couldn't there just be a condition that you put on the site plan when everything has been finalized?
Yeah.
I, I was attempting to find out if the applicant, how you're concerned about, we should go along those lines.
Well, in our, in our discussions, I think, I think one of our concerns has always been that, when you get down to the ground level of doing the landscaping and all of that, and you're getting, you're getting people in there that are just, they've got their equipment, they've, they've got whatever that means they're using to do the work that we, you know, basically, giving them a, a blueprint of some sort to do. There's still some extent, and I think, what you're getting at, Peter, it has something to do with this, this, whoever you get to do that, is gonna be used to doing things a certain way, using certain tools.
Yes, and you know, like, make it larger, make it.
Right, exactly.
Even certain chemicals and different means of achieving results.
Yeah, and as long as they go these used years, yeah. Um. You wanna do a little better.
Yeah, we wanna, we wanna prevent things that we don't wanna happen from happening, and we wanna, and we have to intercept, you know, things that we think could be damaging, right at that level where it's actually getting down and doing it.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's where we need to really be on the ground.
You, you just can't leave it up to the groundkeeper or whoever's doing it.
Yeah.
You need some kind of oversight and some, some methodology.
And it may be, it, there are two different things going on here, two different phases, but there's the actual, the, the project construction itself.
The construction phase and the.
And then there's monitoring phase, right.
And then there's, and then there's forever after, and what comes in down the line.
Well, I think that's what they were talking, right, and that's what the attorney was saying, that maybe it's gonna be some other conditions then.
Or at least forty-nine years.
Right, and then.
It's first of all.
And if dif- if different invasive species become introduced to this area and become a problem, they may have different ecologies, different, different habits, di- different, you know, necessities and, uh, methods of controlling them effectively, and there should be, you know, n- sort of non-invasive controls with the invasives that aren't really gonna damage the environment even more than the invasives themselves do, but even though they get rid of these invasive plants.
Mm-hmm.
And I think with any invasive plant, that there's a, there, there are a var- variety of approaches to eliminating it or controlling it, and there's always, of course, the first question of how, how big a pest or how big a problem is it really, or is it likely to be under these conditions, and do you discourage it by changing the conditions in a, you know, sort of nice biological way?
Yeah, there's a, yeah, yeah.
Which would make the most sense, but you always look for the, the least destructive, the least chemical and, and mech- mechanically disturbing way of doing it.
Mm-hmm.
But you're not sure in the future what those, what the best choices along those lines are really going to be, so I think that's.
I don't think we can specify what, what they're going to be for ever, but I think we can have some kind of method for evaluating what's being done.
The method of evaluation, that, that's, before we just jump in and do something.
I, we, we suggested a monitoring after three years, may, maybe there should be, you know, right af- right after you plant the stuff, the next year, you wanna catch stuff early if you can, maybe, maybe you should do one at one year and then.
Right.
Yeah, but who, but who's doing it?
You always need to monitor.
We said that it's someone, it's a town.
It's gonna be coordinated, we're gonna have to coordinate it, if they're gonna do that.
When, when you try to do something, you have to just stay on the case and see how it's working out, and monitor the situation and see what your success is on what the problems that arise.
And this is essentially what's happening in the areas which are undisturbed and not landscaped, is that correct?
No, I think most, well, most of the mazes, most of the invasives are in, in the old.
Well.
Or is it to keep them from ruining the, the enhanced buffer areas?
There's sort of this, the pre-disturbed areas that are already messed up, because the, the old apple orchard, and, and there's a lot of problem plants, and not necessarily what, what you would, you know, I don't like to describe invasive solely in terms of non-native species, but poison ivy's a native species, it's very invasive, so there are a lot of these native species that certainly act invasive, and there are a lot of, there are a lot of species that are non-native, that have variable degrees and styles, and I'd say are invasive.
Poison ivy is actually a very good barrier to, uh, foot traffic, keeping it from going where you don't want it to.
It's better than dwarf wire, it's just a reliable term of fact.
It's excellent, and, and, you know, berries are beloved of many birds and animals, so I.
It's actually illegal though, in the building.
I have a, poison ivy is.
Yeah, you have to maintain it and get rid of it.
Really, in the village?
So you don't wanna violate the law.
Oh.
Oh, I didn't know that, but, you know, I, I pull up poison ivy all the time, and the birds just plant it back.
You're gonna, you're gonna blow the whole pedestrian avenue program.
Right, well, this is what a lot of people who are considered perfectly wise and practical people at the same time, there aren't, there aren't invasive species, once a species has gotten in here and it's become invasive, there's, there's no totally getting rid of it.
Mm-hmm.
It just isn't, plant or animal, or pathogen, or whatever, there's no totally wiping it out, that's very, how do you do that?
But you can, you can manage the damage.
So it's more a manner. Management is, yeah, and, and some level of control, discouragement.
Should I, should I recall briefly from the I S that the concept is, after the site is disturbed, discompleted, it'd be a three-year period of monitoring?
Yes.
Right.
And after that, site is presumably stable, and life will go on?
Well, but it's not too, too much.
Mm-hmm.
Basic concept, yeah, it's three years is all we discuss in here, so three-year monitoring.
I, I think three years is a good period to, to, to get a good grip on how to monitor and how to respond.
It should be a continuing process.
It could, but it is a continuing process.
It does, it, we stated, we finished that sentence in the paragraph, this monitoring program will be used to set up a maintenance program in the future, if necessary, to control invasive species that reemerge.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And I was suggesting that we tie it to some, like, either the, when the project final or COs, or some kind of timeframe, so that we have a clock, instead of it started when you started construction site, and, and I'm saying, no, we wait until you, things are planted, you've gone through, they're, they're mecking around with it, and then once everything ninety percent filled out, eighty percent occupa- whatever, we, you know, however we quantify it, then we start the clock in terms of a maintenance thing, and then after that, we, I think, I just, I think, I'm uncomfortable with things that aren't quantified, and I think that's saying, that protects everybody, you know, if we come up with something that's.
Oh. Yeah, I was saying. That's fine. That's fine, I agree.
So are we suggesting an actual change to the FEIS here?
I'm suggesting it be quantified, yeah, it's just that it be quant, things be quantified, anything that says, you know, no noise, you know, low noise should be noise below a certain decibel, or as per whatever, at the, at the property line, it's allowed to be whatever it is, twenty-five, sixty-five, you know?
I think Dave's taking notes. Right.
Some of this will be on the site plan, parts will be in addition.
Right, but we're going through stuff that's in the FEIS, right.
Yeah, because, because when, when I looked at it, I wondered, three years after construction, but it's a phased construction, um, wall construction?
No, that's why I'm saying.
That's true, but you know, actually, ultimately, the, the site is, the only construction that's not happening in the way it's proposed right now, but the FEIS is viewing the entire project as built out as one, the only thing that wouldn't be constructed would be actually physical buildings, not any of the site maintenance or any of that, anything that's pertaining to the site itself will be done within the first phase, as soon as we start, so the only thing that won't happen is, three buildings won't be ready.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, check, yep, check. Objective is to continually mean, once construction ends, continually mean, but state of cover.
Uh-huh, right.
Most of the areas will never be disturbed, nothing would be disturbed, is you take the grass out where the building is, and that we establish grass around it, type of things, yep.
Yeah.
So in theory, after you've finished phase one and issued COs, three years from that point, your site, your site will be stabilized, your site will be stabilized, three years from that point will be a maintenance obligation. Your site will be stabilized, three years from that point will be a maintenance obligation, and then that will terminate the maintenance obligation.
Except if you're doing, but you're doing construction of Phase One, you're talking about infrastructure, basically, right? And, and you're saying you're gonna plant the site while there's still trucks moving all around the site and constructing things? No, okay, then I misunderstood.
No, I meant, once everything is erected and finalized, meaning Phase One is a number of buildings, so once those have CFO, you know, which is majority of the project, the only thing that will not be done is actual erection of buildings themselves. All the site work will be done in the first phase of the project. So I consider Phase One CFO, the completion of Phase One.
CFO of fifty percent of the project type thing, whatever, okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
So the landscaping would already, really?
Hundred percent of landscaping will be done.
How can you build a building when there's landscaping there?
Well, I think like you said, the grass.
The only thing that'll be finished here is foundation planting.
It's foundation.
Foundation.
Okay, there's enough room around there.
They won't put any of that in until the building goes in, the building goes in, then they landscape around it. The infrastructure they're talking about is around the ponds and the wetlands areas and the detention basins.
Okay, so the, the enhanced buffers and all of that is considered infrastructure?
And all, and the green infrastructure, and then your buffers, yeah, probably.
Right.
Yeah, so, so here's, here's, here's the basic objective of not just landscaping, but as integral to the erosion control, is to take these areas around the perimeter, for example, and include the buffers and all that kind of stuff and get those established.
We probably have to do that with soil conservation or anyway, so you have to, you have to do that, so you might as well, yeah.
But we wanna, we wanna, we wanna get all these, all these perimeter areas particularly, and particularly where they're susceptible to erosion, we certainly wanna get those established very soon because the potential for erosion can be somewhat stopped by creating the vegetative cover. So, so then what you're left with is sort of, as, as Tom was saying, you got the buildings, you, you put the roadway in, and at some point in time, and it's very specific in the regulations, even areas that aren't disturbed for more than thirty days have to be seeded. So, so even even, you know, like these pads over here, that we're not gonna build right away, you put temporary seed on them. So the idea here is to have the, you know, if it's not gray or brown, it's, it's, you know, if it's not gray or brown, it's green, it's absolutely as soon as possible. And it stays that way until it comes back and build this building and take out the grass and put in the building.
Basically, all the grading will be completed in the first place and stabilized.
Yeah.
Well, here's, here's another little question that occurred to me as I was going over, 'cause I have been looking at it carefully with a viewpoint of trying to figure out if the questions people ask have been answered. And I've actually been having difficulty going back to the questions and finding specifically and precisely in your more essay-like answers, the, where that question has been answered. But with the landbanked parking on the maps, some of that is actually going to be enhanced buffer. From what it looked like when I was trying to study the maps and the buffers, and some of the landbank parking appears to be in buffers which are, are unregulated buffers.
No, no, we're not, we're not counting it.
That's good. I think we talked about this last time.
I think, I think what we were trying to say there is they would, they would act as a buffer. If the pavement's not, just, just being green grass means it's a buffer.
So they don't overlap on?
Do you have the map?
It's right here, it shows.
Where it shows the landbank.
See, see these? It's all these areas here.
Yeah.
Right. Uh-huh. And so the colors here are, are the?
They need to be the key.
Yeah, I, I really had trouble picking through the, the maps, trying to figure out where the, the wetland buffers were with regard to, um, things.
I think there is another map that overlays the.
And, you know, some of the, what look like wetlands now are your stormwater management areas. And so I look at that and think, oh, what's that?
Just, just buffer.
That's actually shows the enhanced buffers.
Natural and enhanced buffers.
Mm-hmm, okay, so then, then go back to your other one with the other, so we can see where the parking area, I think, is right that square. So if you look like this, see that square?
Okay, so.
That's the dip, that's where it bumps out.
And it's, and it's not in there?
Yep, that's right, it goes around here.
Alrighty, okay, good, I'm glad I asked because I just couldn't understand it when I was studying the maps. And I thought, gee whiz, why go to all that trouble of enhancing a buffer if you, and you're not paving it for a parking lot if you have to do it?
And I've brought this up a couple of times, and maybe Spider, you could take a look at this, but I'm wondering, why not have all of the parking spots that are, that are designated landbank to the south and use those as the parking spots that are actually gonna use, and then try to push the landbank spots to the north to discourage car use, so like when a student walks out of their residence, they don't walk by their car and are tempted to get into it. So if their car was further to the south. And, and when I brought that up, Bruce, I think that's why we were confused, that Bruce seemed to answer it along the lines of that they were ecologically sensitive areas.
Yes, what we did when we said we're gonna landbank, what we, what we said was the areas that are adjacent to the wetlands are the areas we wanna do the landbanking in first, because they're, they, in essence, would widen the buffer. That was, that was, so it's a different point of view from what you were saying.
So they really, they're landbanks, but they really can't be used to, for parking?
It can be if, if so needed, that's why they're banked, so there's the enhanced buffer.
They're thinking of the highest and best use.
We have not, we have not countered on that, let's, let's say, right? So we've said, this enhanced buffer has to go from the landbank part over to the well, so that all has to be enhanced. So that, you know, if this for some reason got built part of it, then you would still have that buffer intact that was between the two.
Right, so you're making a, a value choice, though?
Yes.
In terms of the, the wetland buffer versus trying to pull the parking spots to the south?
Yes, in that order, wetlands first, parking second, yeah.
Mm-hmm. And it, another little question with regard to the enhanced buffers, if they are narrower than a one hundred-foot buffer, does the enhancement, is it intended or, or does it make it work better as a buffer than a full-sized, unenhanced buffer?
Actually, at this point, with the orchard and poison ivy, those hundred-foot buffers are not of very good value. So what we were discussing with Spider from the day one is that's provide something of a much higher quality, higher diversity for wildlife.
In those areas.
In, in those areas, and it will.
So it's, it's an effort to enhance biodiversity, but, but does it actually mitigate not having fully one hundred-foot buffers in some places?
I think the quality of it is much more important than the width of it. The width really doesn't.
I would agree with that, considering.
Okay, 'cause that has never been explicitly said in the FEIS.
Yeah, the, the, if you remember, the, the object, the overall objective was to stay out here, absolutely as much as possible.
Yeah.
Right.
So, so what Spider and Mark had talked, quoted on is if you had to encroach in a buffer, then this welling, for example, may not be as high value, is not as high value as these. So, so, so the trade-off was, was to do enhancements in, in. I'm sorry, should we talk about this?
Yeah, and also there was a large upland area in this corner, which was supposed to develop, was on the concept plan show, the development, and we pulled that back, that was based on Spider's input also.
Yeah, I remember that.
So we kind of worked together on that for the last two years to get to this point.
Because wherever you have, um, upland adjacent to wetland, that's a good combination. Most wetland-dependent organisms are also dependent on, on uplands and the, the connection between the wetland and the upland. This is a transition area, and organisms, you know, animals move from one to the other. And an abrupt boundary where it's just wetland and then development or upland with no, no water, no, no wetland to supply the kind of resources animals need, the weather, it's just a much more, you know, much less valuable sort of habitat for everything.
Well, the, the point I'm making, though, is that, you know, all of these things are described, but they're not explicitly explained. You know, reading it, I, I, you know, read about biodiversity enhancements, native plants, and I think, oh, that's nice, oh, that's nice, that's fine, that's wonderful, but I don't, I can't click it in to, um...
Are you implementing it?
A linkage to, even explicitly saying, we want this to be the best possible project with the least impact. I, you know, that seems awfully bald to ask people to say something like that and then say, and here's how we're gonna do it, this, 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 and this.
Yeah, that's a good general goal, but, yeah, when you get to specifics, there are, not, not exactly conflicts, but there are, there are values that have to be balanced. And then, then it becomes a more difficult way of making those specific choices because there, there are always gonna be compromises. And part, part of the compromises are determined by the, the condition of whatever site it is, and the, the different conditions in different parts of them, the relative value to this or that species or group of species or ecological, I don't know, type of organism, the organism that likes this sort of thing or that sort of thing. It becomes more complicated as you start to get down to more detail.
So, so basically, you can't get pinned down to something really specific because it might not work or things would change, or you'd end up with great big moths that would eat it all, or, you know.
Sometimes, sometimes you can, because let's say you have a species that's really unique, and there's great habitat for it, it's rare. That becomes a really important species to be concerned about and to preserve and to support. Then, then there's more drive to, you know, it assumes a higher priority in the planning.
What does George have to say, he's been trying?
I was gonna ask if anybody else remembers Car Fifty-four, the guy would go, ooh, 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 whatever he wanted to interrupt. He was getting to that point.
Didn't watch that.
The, there are two points I wanna make briefly, I hope. One is the wetlands law is currently enjoined, there is an appeal pending, it'll probably be decided mid-fall. It does not, the wetlands law currently does not exempt this project, so if the wetlands law is reinstated and carry out activities which require a permission, you'll have to obtain a permit, and that provides a framework for which I think everyone should be prepared. And it does specify the circumstances in which the planning board can make a determination to modify the buffer. And I think that those, that mechanism is one that should be considered when you're looking at the, the questions that you're talking about now. The second point is really a question, there are vernal pools proposed on this and other activities which will take place, some of which are, as I understand, necessary mitigation, some of which are what I would characterize as volunteered mitigation. And I think it's important, especially with the vernal pools, because I understand there is always a difficult, there's always difficulty in knowing if those are going to actually succeed and serve their purpose. If it's not a necessary mitigation, but one that's volunteered, and it turns out to be something which can't be sustained in that particular part, everyone needs to know that because we, we otherwise are going to have a condition which says if there's mitigation that's required, you're going to have to maintain it or get a project modification. If there's something you're volunteering and you're making good faith effort and it doesn't work, that can be treated differently than something which has to be there to mitigate an impact. So when you talk about these different enhanced buffers and so on, it's important to keep that context in a framework that lets you assign it to one or, one or the other of those classes. So if you have two vernal pools that you'd like to do but are not necessary to mitigate an impact on the wetland, you should identify them in the FEIS and make sure that the treatment is acknowledged as being something that is being undertaken on a voluntary basis to, um, do something you're not required to do. And we can treat that differently on the, in the findings and on the site plan requirements.
So as I say, George, so in the site plan, though, again, we'd come up possibly with a condition that identified these and then say, if it was so determined, then there'll be a process so that I wouldn't have to necessarily come back to the board because it's an agreed-upon, the applicants professional will meet with our professional to discuss, you know, 'cause there's no use keeping a vernal pool that's not a vernal pool, and there might be something better that it just shaped into and that now we're trying to force it to be something that it's not. So we might have a different mitigation strategy.
If I can just, as far as vernal pools, we look at.
Well, that was just an example, could be anything.
Yeah, but we selected areas where we know where the groundwater is, and we did our best attempt, you know, to design them so they work in the future.
Right.
If there was a drier year perhaps, and the water in area was down, these vernal pools would just become simply wetlands, at the bottom would be some wetland plants growing through the season. So I don't see any harm, you know, but.
Which is what it, it's in nature, okay, yeah, okay. I thought that, Spider, I thought in one of your reports, though, you indicated that some of the, um, again, we'll just use vernal pools, were kind of pushed, that they may not actually be suitable, we might be trying to attract animal, trying to attract salamanders there that may actually be, you know, hit by a car, I would say, or hit by a bike or a pedestrian or something. So they may be, they might be cross purposes, and I thought that was from one of your reports.
I think it was someone else.
No, the ENCB in their comments.
Okay, okay.
So.
All right.
So to get back to Lynn's basic question, I think you're trying to ask, is a hundred-foot of existing buffer, what's the metric to compare that to when you do a disturbance, you do mitigation?
Yeah.
I think what, the whole objective of mitigation is to try and replace the values that existed before or exceed them. So if, if, if Spider, Spider looks at the hundred feet of orchard and, and poison ivy, I'm, I'm being real general here, as having a certain value, and we ask to reduce that down, then is Spider happy that we reduced it to as at least the value of the hundred-foot, even though it's now in fifty feet? So that, and that's kind of the whole thought process behind mitigation, if you, if you're gonna make a change, you wanna replace the values of what was there, or, or, our hope here is that we increase the values. So when Spider looks at the overall site, he can say, you know, okay, we, we asked for these certain things, but as far as the values to the wetland as a buffer or the values ecologically or that type of thing, have, have we done a good job and do we do enough mitigation to rectify or whatever you wanna call it, compensate for a change, a change point.
For any damages or any changes, right.
So, so I think that's, that's the metric that, you know, Spider and anybody who reviews this would, would look at it, look at the site again. this would, would look at it, look at the site against, um, and it relates to all the wetland laws, for example, whether it's the town law, the state law, or, or federal law, it's all, it's all looking at values in this case. Um, it's, it's more than values, but I let these guys know what about that.
When, in, in my job as wetland inspector, when I'm working with some landowner or something, that's what it always comes down to, what, what can we do here that satisfies the law? And it also is an improvement on what you're trying to achieve and protects the, the real value of the resource, rather than just amounts to applying some sort of arbitrary measurement that's really only there to kind of set a basic standard that at the very least, we're, we're going to make it, make this good a solution.
Well, I think the, the, like, a hundred-foot buffer, a fifty-foot buffer, or whatever, it's like, you almost can't go wrong if you put that number in. That's what, and a lot of times, they kind of put that number and say, because if you screw up, you're, you're kind of covered, and it also gives a, a metric. People could say, here it is.
Right, you gotta start with something.
But if you have something that you can actually float it around and you have it that specific, you're gonna get a better situation.
You have to look at the, the existing situation and apply that standard reasonably to the situation. If, you know, like, for example, I, I had one, yeah, reasonable, if, here's, there's a wetland, technically, it's a wetland, I mean, okay, technically, you've got like the eighty-seven federal manual, and it'll tell you, you know, what a wetland is. It doesn't tell you how valuable it is, it doesn't tell you what the quality is, it just says, this is a wetland, this, this isn't a wetland. That's, that's basically the only simple question it's trying to answer. And so you have some, something that's technically a wetland, but it, it just sort of floods out and gets somebody's lawn flooded sometimes. And there's this other part of it that's really of high quality and value to wildlife, and it's a contin-, you know, contiguous wetland. So what do we decide if this person wants to have some sort of a project? If, if he can put it in a place that's, that's dry, then that's fine. If he, if he wants to modify things so that he can make this part of it, this just some flooded part of his lawn, a little drier, then he could have a permission to build that up or drain it off and put more water in, in the good part of the wetland, but to adjust the situation so that you're not losing any wetland values naturally. And you may be increasing the value, and he's increasing the security of, of his, of his project and the safety of his project and not, you know, the, the sort of natural threats to his project. And you come up with this new plan that sort of combines all these things, and it's just a better outcome for the landowner and for the natural environment. And then, you know, we've often worked out solutions like that. Because that's what makes sense, you gotta do what makes sense.
It does, and it's, it's nice to hear that, because, you know, these things are implied as you read things in the DEIS, but you have to really work at it to understand the implications.
Keep, keep in mind that, that the DI, DEIS is, is a much more global document, is supposed to identify the environmental issues. It's the site plan, and, once you get to site plan, that's when you really work on the details of how you're gonna implement the site plan and how you're going to place conditions so that the environmental issues that have been identified in the EIS are going to be addressed during the site plan process. That's the, um, that is the implementing document, is the site plan. And that's where you're going to get the more detailed types of conditions necessary to make sure that the issues that were identified in the EIS will be properly taken care, taken care of and mitigated. So you're, you're not generally going to see in your, um, final EIS the detailed implementation of the concerns that have been raised and how you're gonna mitigate them, that will be during the site plan process.
But we, but what we have done here is try to give you really the final plan.
Yeah.
So Spider can say, here's the DEIS that said we're gonna do this mitigation, here's the proof and the pudding, that what's on this plan does that, and, you know, a little anecdotically here, I, I've gotten very frustrated, and I know Martin has, about trying to protect the, the buffer area at the expense of some nice woods or something like that, just because they're law, so cut and dry. I think that's why these two guys bond, is they both, they both think about values, you know, what's really best for the ecology, more than some specific line and sand type of thing, you know.
Okay. Um, so, uh, can I ask one question, going back to, uh, are you using potable water to water your plants, then? Is it coming from well water? Is that what you're planning on, you having an irrigation system? We're not doing, so it'll be like plants that are a little bit more tolerant, native species are gonna be chose a little bit more sort of escape type?
No, and we're not irrigating.
Yeah, great, yeah, yeah, that's great.
Unless these things have to be pampered.
No, exactly, I just...
Initially, you might have to.
Right, but I don't, I don't, you don't wanna be using well water for that, so that's the, I just wanna make sure that we're not watering it.
Maybe discuss it at one point, you know, maybe drawing from the ponds there for that reason.
Right. Or even well waters, it's a waste to use that for the plants. Um, and one of the other things that wasn't, and I didn't see how, and I'm, probably Dave, you might be able to help with this, when you're doing construction, you said that you're gonna maintain, you're gonna be disturbing the soil and you're maintaining the dust on the site, and you're gonna monitor it at the property line somehow, and, uh, workers are gonna take showers on site, and it's, it says they'll shower, page nineteen on site. So anyway, but I'm wondering how you're gonna do that, number one. It doesn't say that you're gonna put down any kind of, anything on the, to keep the dust down, or, uh, I don't know how you're keeping the dust contained, so I'm wondering what...
You said we're gonna monitor the property line.
Right, how do you, how do you do the monitoring of the property line?
I'm not an expert in this, so I don't know, but, but you can, you can monitor for air quality. I think last time I was telling you about this, uh, old arsenic plant, for example, that was being taken down and demolished, and that protocol of monitoring air quality was, was part of that, so whatever the...
Well, that's a, that's a big thing, other than, well, this is arsenic, I guess, could be airborne then and, and or dust particles, so...
Yeah, yeah, it's like, it's like...
Page twenty, starting at the...
So there's a gizmo that you hold up, the air goes into it, and you take readings.
Exactly, exactly. So, so the idea there is, you know, if, if there was some sort of situation out there, then you put water on the soil and put away, you put calcium chloride on it or something.
Yeah, but it doesn't say calcium chloride, didn't say watering, so that's why I was wondering what you were doing. Neither of those are used, in, in at least where, where I read, so that's why I was wondering how you're keeping the dust down. And that, you just answered, that's what you're planning on, using calcium chloride, probably of water, and or whatever else is out there?
Whatever's appropriate, yeah, yeah, water generally, but there could be some instances where you have higher wind days or something, and then you might wanna put some calcium chloride, 'cause it does a better job.
Do you plan to monitor the, as you, as you're doing that? Do you plan to monitor wind strength, interaction?
I get it, I'm not an expert in this, but, but, uh, that certainly should be part of the thought process, is, you know, start to work on a site during the day, and maybe they're in a different area, maybe they're, uh, whatever, but the, the idea there was to have someone able to monitor that site during these critical time periods.
Also, I noticed that if you talk about the toxins, the level of toxins that are acceptable, sometimes you use the DEC standards, sometimes you use the DOH standards, sometimes you use the EPA standards. Uh, are those standards compatible, or are they different, or...
I saw those questions, I've sent them on to our expert. I, I think it's, uh, it's basically based on the use restrictive residential, I think. Maybe that's better answering.
There's DEC soil cleanup objectives, and there's the DOH that's got these, the Health Department's got these ambient levels, and you can't exceed those ambient levels. The soil cleanup, it's got a little different, um...
Parameter.
Parameters, and they're for ground field sites, mostly, so it's, it's, it's different. There are two different standards there, and I, we've asked for that just to be explained.
Yeah, and I've asked our guy to explain it, but, sorry, I don't even have an answer to it.
Do, do, do these standards apply differently to industrial waste, like brownfields versus high agricultural waste, like fertilizers and pesticides and...
Both standards, both the DEC soil cleanup and the Department of Health are based on residential, and the, the threat is for small children ingesting dirt, that's the...
Yeah, the, the measures we're taking are, are, I believe, higher than you might otherwise, 'cause the real problem is ingestion directly. Some kid eating soil and stuffing it, as opposed to, uh, standard construction. So we're trying to, we're trying to protect during construction and during construction as well.
But it's almost like kind of, scared of worms or something, in that, unless you identify the particular vulnerabilities of particular, you know, biological entities, species, categories, like other plants, or pets, or children, or people of different ages, or people with different health conditions, then it, it, it becomes just more complicated. Who, who and what are you really obligated to try to protect?
So we bury the stuff where people are likely to be touching the dirt, and we cover the rest with poison ivy.
Are we obligated, are we obligated to protect stupid children?
Easy there. Kids, kids do what kids do, there's just no getting around it. And actually, dirt is good for you, usually, unless it's...
That's all, that's all in the sound.
Unless it's contaminated. Unless it's contaminated.
Now, you're taking me back to my trouble. This kid, we called him, I don't know why, Dmitrius, and he used to sit on a, wasn't even a sand pile, it was a dirt pile, and he'd lick his feet and stick them back in and lick them off again.
Mr. Dmitrius still alive today?
What's he doing? I have no idea, I'll bet he's a healthy gentleman.
He does mineral supplements.
Yeah, he does mineral supplements.
Well, you know, dust is a problem for people with lung problems and things like that, too, no matter what the dust is.
Yeah, okay, well, it's, okay, keep it moving.
Yeah, it's just a particular matter, if any can, can be improved, hard on your lungs.
So where else are we going here?
Uh, I think we finished with the environmental stuff, at least in my dusty brain.
It just gets to be too much after.
Yeah.
Well, everything leads to everything else, and it's really sort of hard to get a grip on, you know...
Yeah, we just try to do the best we can, be committed to it, I guess.
Okay, so, you know, I've... I don't know where to go from here, I, I think maybe we've talked about all sorts of things. Is there anything else you would like to bring up, though, that you've been working on that we haven't heard about, or...
I'm gonna be more environmental, like Augusta's not here either, so she had, I know a list of questions, unfortunately, she had to be called out tonight, but she may have additional questions in this area.
Well, David sent us, David sent us a, a list, a list of...
A list of Augusta's that still has to go on that list.
Yeah.
So, so you got, usually the entire list, so there's no point in me repeating it?
I just gave them, I gave them, most of yours, some of mine.
And my just, no, I'm, I'm just saying mine here.
I have a few new little ones, but I just haven't gone through, I've been doing things line by line, looking at it just from the viewpoint of, are these questions answered? And where, where are the answers?
And I, I knew you would have it, so...
So, but I haven't gotten through the whole thing.
I mean, what you have, that would be a good job.
It's, it's at the bottom of the list here.
I'd be glad to get together with Augusta or anybody else that hasn't been here with Meg.
Oh, okay, well, I'll email it to you.
To what? I'm Spider, I'm sorry.
No, I said I'd, I'd certainly be happy to meet with Augusta and anybody else who hasn't been in on all of our discussions.
Well, I think you've written, at least, you have, we have your reports, so I think it's, most of the stuff is, is really now going back on the FEIS now.
Yeah, and, and she can go back and forth and...
Right, and that's pretty much what we've been doing.
If I happen to be down for this.
I don't think we have anything new to submit or report, I think what we're, and it's gonna have been in communication with Dave, but what we were looking for was more direction and, um, expectation for when, to receive comments and what was the board's anticipated process for, um, the response back to Dave and timelines, things like that, and ultimately, the peer review sort of process itself, too. So we were just looking for, I think, input from you guys more than anything else. Because we don't have a complete list of questions or comments, and we didn't wanna prematurely start submitting stuff until we were completely...
I think one of the things that we discussed last week, and Dave probably, is that some of the subjective language in there, we've, you know, we're taking out, and nobody wants to really edit the whole document like that, although we've all kind of done our own little redlining, so I think that's probably a lot of the comments that you're getting relative to that. And, um, and we would prefer the document to be more factual, rather than, while it may be, this is a benefit to something, I think you don't need to come to a conclusion, just state the facts type of thing. I think there's some conclusions drawn that may or may not be subjective, so I think that was, you know, the summing of probably the, you know, last meeting's comments, and then...
It's your document, so...
Yeah, and then, we were supposed to have...
I think I'm really looking for questions that aren't answered or not completely answered, that's the two things that really operate now.
What aren't, I just so you know, we were thinking about, one time when I talked about this, we got Dave's initial list here, was we were gonna try to answer them on the list, and then also, it would be in the document.
Or we would submit, basically, we were saying, we would submit all the requests, the clarifications or more information directly to Dave, and let Dave integrate it into the document how he wanted it. But what we also wanted to do was include it in this matrix, and just, we'll create our own, just where we say we responded to it here at this page, or on the same page, and this is the comment we added, or the information we provided, or whatever my event. So we can go through, similar to what Dave provided us in the site plan review, that, you know, he had a seven-page document, but it was pretty quick and easy to review after we made all the changes, because we kind of just kept tabs of it, so we're trying to do double the work, but we thought it'd be a little easier way to, to go through and make sure everyone's comments, again, were at least responded to and incorporated. Dave would be the one to finally incorporate it into the document itself, but we at least wanted to respond, and so it was some, some form of a checklist.
Okay, so we'll just keep combing through.
Well, Michael has, keeps pushing us to finish, so we're, we're, we were given a timeline that I don't think we've all responded to, in that, um, but it, it, like, you know, it's all, it's just, it's a lot for everybody to review, so everybody's trying to get through it, so...
It's a lot.
But what I was trying to do, and I described in my note, 'cause I, I had seventy pages of the three sections that I was reviewing, and I, I just couldn't imagine actually rewriting or editing that document where we would say, this is a planning board document, it's a, it's a room write document, it has its function, and, but I don't understand why we're taking this document and trying to, you know, force a, a square peg into a round hole. So that's why, what I've done is I've just gone through the sections and just deleted anything that, that just isn't a, a lack in my statement.
It's not factual, or subjective.
Right, so, and, and I, you know, in a section, if it's about land use, and like, any of the sentences that are, that are just purely factual, that's what I've kept in my land use section, and I've, you know, anything that says, well, there's a benefit, and there may be a benefit, and it's, you know, it's like, there, there's no possible way that, I, I think we can move forward with that type of language in a document that we're supposed to say is a planning board document. with that type of language in a document that we're supposed to say is a planning board document.
Are you finding questions that weren't answered, Tim?
Not necessarily questions that weren't answered, but it could be a statement where it says we're land banking X number of spots and there is an advantage to this for this reason and that reason. And I'm just deleting all that stuff about there is an advantage. I'm just saying we're land banking this many spots. And then I'm just looking for just facts as opposed to, because who's to say what the advantage is with with any of these things?
You are.
You give me your.
You you have to.
Right, but but it doesn't need to be in the document, I think we can make that determination. We don't have to put it in the document and say we're, you know, it's this or that.
Oh, but I but this is this is maybe I didn't add this stuff.
I'm asking for something else, it doesn't matter.
I think the way I'm looking at this though is these are the factual statements. This is the planning board's document. And then we would just keep the draft FEIS as an appendix to the document.
I don't know. In the end, it's your document, you have to make it like you want it to be with your your comfortable with.
Yeah, but if you if you're making a decision about how something should be done, there's there's nothing wrong with having a rationale for for doing that. In fact, you wanted rationale, somebody else, third party reading it would say, why the hell did you bank six spots?
Just because Will Murray makes a conclusion doesn't necessarily mean it's the wrong conclusion. You can agree with the conclusion, you don't have to agree with the conclusion or you can't.
Although I completely agree, some of the conclusions I I fully support and others I'm like, ah, I can see the point, but I don't necessarily agree.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Right, right.
All I'm trying to do is eliminate that stuff and that will be referenced in the document that we would call the draft FEIS, which would be an appendix to our document. But I don't understand the exercise of us rewriting a draft FEIS.
You've got a range of things you're trying to accomplish. Ultimately, the you need to come to a, you need to have a finding statement which makes more the broader conclusions about what's in the FEIS and the FEIS has to provide the basis for that. But at the same time, in the FEIS, you're responding to comments. Someone might say, what's the point of land banking? And you can respond in the context of the FEIS. But I think there are conclusion uh statements in the FEIS which go beyond a descriptive response and explanatory response. It it sort of are, you know, they they try to paint the ultimate conclusion. So if you're saying the the purpose of land banking is this and it has these advantages, that could be sort of descriptive, but it's also stating some conclusions which the planning board has to accept. But in the finding statement, it becomes, it goes one step further and says, this is what we find and this is how the impact is addressed. And they these are the additional mitigations that will be required and these are the things that will be done in the site plan. And those become rules.
I think what I'm suggesting is kind of an interim step between the draft FEIS and the finding statement. And and I think by doing it this way, I think we'll be more successful at creating a finding statement sooner.
I know what you're saying, new points of discussion where you just need to re- replace it with language the planning board is trying to generate. It's it's not gonna get to from the applicant to the planning board statement in any efficient or effective way by trying to massage it or by asking the applicant to rewrite it. You need to take out what is in there that is inadequate for your purpose and say what's your purpose.
How do you do that with a PDF? I mean, I'm just not that.
I just cut and paste it into work.
You can't cut and paste a PDF.
You can cut and paste it into work.
There's a lot of disorientation.
Dave Dave has word word version anyway, so.
Uh huh.
Well, that could be better.
So I could give him markups.
I'll take the program.
If you can give your stuff in redline happy, perfect.
Okay.
Recover your PDF.
Yeah, I have a little.
I have some versions, I have redline version and I have the one where I've just deleted every section.
But the one that you can delete, I can show that in the reference on review and see what's been deleted.
I didn't I didn't do that version in track changes. I started doing it in track changes, but I felt like I would, you know, I might as well be like rewriting someone's dissertation.
Can't even turn it into a JPG when somebody gets put in Photoshop.
It just felt like a really insane exercise.
I can take both documents.
You can compare them.
All right, the only other thing, be careful of is make sure that it's responsive to the questions. Take something out, you're not not taking out something that was in response to a question. Because that's that's the objective.
That's why I think then, that's why I think your document would just continue to exist and it would be a supplement to our finding statement.
I would hand it to.
For the determinants, for your intern.
Yeah.
Like why why rewrite?
Yeah, and the problem that I'm having is trying to figure out where in your prose in italics the questions that you list in a group ahead of the responses is the actual answer to each specific question. Cause sometimes I just can't find it. You know, I read it, I go back, I look at the appendices and whatever. It takes me two hours and I can't find it.
Get through twenty five pages.
And so I write in red in my little notes, I can't find it.
That's fine. I didn't see that, yeah, that's.
Uh huh, so, um.
Well, we we had at one point discussed inserting those comment numbers at the end of a sentence and dealt with that comment.
Yeah.
My recollection is there was some resistance.
It didn't happen, but it would have been happening.
The comments number?
Well, you you've listed in the um the comments you that you're addressing, well, here on, for instance, page fifty one of the FEIS under um.
W, can you just? Give me your, give me your.
Any of these pages, it's any of these pages. You you list ENCB, well, this one only has three different things, so let's go back to um. It tells which which um comment you've ferreted out from the source of the comments, whether was it a public hearing or a written comment, blah blah blah. But when you give the answer, you don't give that number to show which comment the answer goes to. And so.
Yeah, but I guess I took that as all that ju- that general, everything above that, here's the response to all of those questions. Many of which were similar, yes, that they're not specific sometimes.
Well, well, but that that was the idea. And I understood that idea, but when I actually read the text, I I don't find the specific and exact answer to some of the questions. Maybe I'm missing something that's implied.
Well, maybe we missed it too, maybe we did. We might have missed it too, so it needs to be noted. And I think to remember is that, you know, each section has, you know, the specific, you know, this was woodlands. So these were mostly questions that were grouped, woodlands is the response. And then then they had miscellaneous questions that were relevant to that section. We couldn't group them, so we answered them individually.
But you know, there were even some questions that, you know, appear to me to be frankly irrelevant. And it would be clarify matters if you were to say, this question doesn't really, you know, address the scope or, you know, this question.
That's certainly something this board can do when you when you prepare your response.
There are a lot of those.
So. So you're being polite and not saying that or what are you gonna say on that? Irrelevant, so and so put to comment, Joe Blow says this and you put down irrelevant.
We can't say that, you can say that.
If they say that, that's gonna be seem like a little bit like.
You can decide what is and isn't answered. I mean, I put that, you can do that, you don't have to answer them.
Well, that's what I was thinking, if it's our FEIS, I'm I'm not really, you know, if there's a section on woodlands and someone was asking a question that seems like it's woodland related and then whether it's in the response or not. We can answer or we don't, or we do not need to answer it.
You can come up with your answer.
We can just state the relevant information related to woodlands, period.
But then you also get the same, I think the same concern of what we're all trying to address and make sure everyone's comments are addressed. And everyone, I mean, has it been a painstaking issue of this?
That's that's your document, you you've done that, so that document exists.
Exactly, you can use it as a supplement, if somebody ever complains, then you can say they addressed it, when we looked through it, we decided.
Okay. Yeah, great. We don't care about, but we don't, it's not relevant to us.
We decided that it isn't the most relevant issue in that in that scope of questions.
Right, and then when we don't find things, we have to figure out where to get the answer and whether it comes from you or whether it's something that's obvious or whether it's something, I don't know. Okay, we'll plod on, I'll send you my email.
So can we can we go over like what what is our, I mean, I I feel like I've kind of identified a path for myself. I wanna see if we're all on the same page or we all like headed in different directions. Like, how do we get this document moving forward? I need your comments. I need to get what is it in the document that we still need to Doug started that list.
Didn't we agree last meeting that Peter had some kind of framework, I thought, that we all discussed about looking at, we never saw that framework.
But I never saw Peter's framework, it never got sent to us.
I didn't, I didn't share, send it to Rick.
Dave, right. I think, Dave, that's what we had said last meeting, that we were gonna use the framework that Peter had done, right?
You got that.
Nope.
No, no, we saw that. But and that may or may not coincide with what you're doing and you're already done, then just do it. But I've I have little sticky notes in all of my things, like on the document, so.
I'll send you two.
Okay, if you have your computer here, I can give it to you now, I have it open.
I don't have to.
We'll email it.
Oh, email it to you.
Yeah, email it to us, that'd be great. Then Dave told him out of that loop, he doesn't need to do that.
And then once we have this this collection of submissions with Dave, what's the next step? The stuff that we need, maybe the questions that weren't answered, we need to get that back to them.
But you're gonna provide it to them, you're you're the co-lead, right, you're the keeper, the key.
Yeah, he is. Well, that seems very straightforward, but but then I'm I'm worried that we're gonna have this
Another document.
Planning board draft FEIS, which just, like, I'm gonna read Eileen's section and she's gonna read my section and it's.
We did it differently.
And we did it differently and like, like, I don't feel like we've agreed on a a a format or a style. There's gonna be some things where it's gonna have to discuss certainly on how that final goes out.
So what I think would be helpful is maybe first dividing it into making sure the EIS has got all the information in it. That's, and then you need to review it and see whether you agree with the, based on the information, whether all the questions have been answered and whether the responses are appropriate. And divide that up among yourselves, how.
Right, that's already been done, we already have that, yeah.
However, that makes sense, so that you will then, I suppose each of you will prepare a draft of your section.
Which is what we're.
We're doing.
Which is what you're doing and then the board will review that.
I'm done with mine.
Right, I'm going afield, a little bit diff- I'm going and doing, like, I'm looking at the zoning stuff now. I'm looking at some of the other sections, but but I would like to see Peter's.
Form.
Make sure that we get the information to Doug as soon as we can, so he can get that right back.
Okay, so.
I'm a little less worried about that, I feel like if we send Doug questions, he's gonna get us responses. But the per- the what I'm worried about is we're gonna have this several hundred page long document that just is a collection of styles.
I it's something that the board is going to agree on. Maybe it's by consensus or however.
But Dave, okay, I think where you're what you're missing is, okay, so we all give you your comments, you're gonna forward them on. When is it gonna be a consensus then among us? Prior to you sending them on, we're gonna then, you have a whole compilation saying, this is what I'm sending on?
What we give to Doug is going to be pretty black and white, I think. Either they addressed the comment or they didn't, or they didn't give enough information.
Is it going to be related back to the document that we've been poring over?
Yes, yes.
That's a that's a tactic.
Occasional line numbers.
So that that will be restructured in a way that you could read it through and it would be improved and it would make sense.
George is a good idea about the numbers.
That comes next. I wanna make sure that they have everything that we need from them and we can work on the part of rewriting the parts and taking pieces out, it's kind of similar to what Tim has been working on.
Well, hopefully you've heard some of the comments that you're gonna be taking some of that stuff out anyway, so that we won't have to go through and retake stuff out.
Yeah, we're not doing anything else left, Dave is doing everything else.
It's their document, what we're missing is anything that they didn't answer, but from here on out, it's ours.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry. Okay, okay, gotcha.
My suggestion, given you've been through a lot, is you have one guy that does kind of the editing for approval by the others cause it can get very confusing.
Right.
As Tim's saying, you got five different editors, right? So maybe if you give your edits to to Dave, let him put the stuff in, then you guys can all read it and say, uh huh, or no, you know. And then ultimately end up with a document that you you can.
But is that, I mean, is that what Dave is supposed to be doing?
Yep.
Yeah. Unless you guys need someone else, yeah. I mean, I mean, the the thing with Dave and George is they also look at it from the point of view of the law as well is is they're looking at your edits and you might wanna take something out. Maybe George will say, you know, maybe we, maybe I need to talk to Tim about this because we really shouldn't for this reason. Or Dave might say that, so it it's good to have these guys as a a reviewer for your stuff as well.
Okay.
Because of their point of view, you know, this. They they know the law and why, you know, some of the stuff you see in there that we put in there, I'm sure you're going, why the heck did they ever say that type of thing? From our point of view, it's something that we had to say, you know, type of thing, to to be able to answer the question or or something along those lines.
George is gonna be doing the findings and he kind of sifts out what's really important here. And makes that the finding, something that we look at the site plan and make sure that there's conditions on that site plan that address those findings. So it's kind of a, the DEIS is a vocal information, the FEIS is a response to the comments. We're trying to sort out here what's really important, George is going to be doing that.
I do the clip not version, huh?
Yeah.
When you say the findings, so you're you're drafting a a finding statement?
Yes. And and that's, and I've been.
But it almost seems like why 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 wouldn't we be identifying what we want listed in the finding statement?
Well, of course.
You certainly are welcome to.
Right, but I it seems like that's probably more important than than FEIS.
George would love that.
There are there are some areas where I think I can predict with a fair degree of certainty what the board will want to see. There are other areas like fiscal impact where I'm not going to take the liberty of predicting.
Right, and I I when I was reviewing the community section, I feel like we can't comment on any of that stuff until we have the the third party review.
Well, you can lay out the general framework, there is information which has to be in the FEIS, which has to be acceptable to you, which will lead to some conclusions about what is in that section. But you know that you want to address the police impact, you know, the general nature of the issues that are re- that require analysis. So you can, from my standpoint, you can lay out some of the framework, but can't come to a conclusion until the information is there. You know, it.
So is that, is this list of findings something that you're working on currently or you're waiting for FEIS?
I'm working on the FE, some sections of the FE, based on some sections of the FEIS, I'm beginning to draft a rough outline of a finding statement. Which is, you know, obviously going to be reviewed in detail by you and it's not something that needs to be reviewed at this point
Right.
because you don't have the information.
We don't have what?
You do not have the information that you need to complete it. So there's really, you need to get through the EIS first.
But we can review findings from certain sections. Why not do that?
Suggest findings for.
You can, as you go through the EIS, you're gonna see things in there that rise to the level of a finding with respect to soils. The condition is, there are two contaminants of concern. They are, they can be mitigated by the following practice. We find these are significant contaminants that have impacts and and need to be mitigated and here's how they would be mitigated. You can pretty much outline how that's gonna play out. It's it's not going the very whole lot. There's some information that we still need, but generally you can lay that out. And as you go through that section, you would say, make sure these two things are addressed. Make sure they can be addressed by the soil separation and and that becomes a finding that you wanna make. If there is an impact, it can be mitigated. And here's the mitigation technique and here's things which should be considered at site plan, a cabin water truck on the property that would be relevant to that section of the finding. That's that's pretty much, you know, that's not rocket science, that dealing with police guys is gonna be more complicated. But certainly as you go through and you see something and you say, this is important, make sure it translates into the findings there.
Okay, I pushing ten, I think we're we're starting to go numb and. And, uh, I, I think we have a clear conduit to where we're supposed to be sending our comments and observations and criticisms and whatever else to Dave's. And, and, and we also would love to see the kind of format that Peter's been using that has received such praise.
I'll have it to first in order.
Okay, and I think we'll just have to keep plowing on and, uh, I'll have to figure out how I can catch up or do stuff, because I'm gonna be away in July, but I'll see what can be done. And, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, appreciate it.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Okay.
Let me just say that we found a solution to the sidewalk.
Section of the soil you're saying was.
Page nineteen eighteen. It talks, it doesn't talk about the cost, it doesn't, it talks about.
Okay, then we want to adjourn. Dave has to tell us about a solution to the sidewalk.
Property line, which, you know, I mean, just to, to, maybe, I'm not sure that's actually the best one. You know, if you're gonna, it doesn't say you're using the. Watering the site. I just wanted to, yeah, yeah, it just says you're gonna monitor the property line, I don't.
Okay.
That seems.
There's an area between the.
I think, did I tell you it was page sixteen and page?